All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board and Wage and Personnel Meeting, Board Meeting on Monday, February 24th at 5:45 PM here at the Lakeville Police Station. Lake Cam is recording the meeting. Is there anybody else here recording? No? All right, if we could please just rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we just have a couple of things here. Some Select Board announcements. Our Treasurer Collector would like to remind residents that excise tax bills are due March 3rd. And if you have any questions regarding the excise bill, you can contact them at 508-946-8801. As a repeat, our Council on Aging is in need of volunteer drivers for Meals on Wheels Delivery Program or as an out-of-town medical driver. These are very important programs for our seniors and are only able to run with the help of volunteers. You can volunteer as many or as few days a month as your schedule will allow. And for more information on volunteering, please reach out to the Council on Aging at 508-947-7224. And just a quick fun fact, the town office building was built in 1894 and was originally used as a pumping station for the city of Taunton. Drum. Yes?
If you'd like to ask the public for some fun facts, because I am running dry. As you can tell from the fun fact tonight, I am out of ideas. So I need help from anybody that has fun facts about Lakeville. Please email them to me.
Good. All right, anybody else have anything for our Select Board announcements? I'd like to turn it over now to our Town Administrator, Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've met with Michael Ellis and Lacy Marshall on the fiscal '26 budget. We pretty much meet daily trying to crunch the numbers, pull any tricks out of our hats for the budget this year. We will be presenting it on the 31st of March. We'll be sending it out two weeks ahead of time to the Select Board Finance Committee and Capital Expenditures Committee for review. Our deep LTA funding request was unsuccessful. However, I put in a letter of interest to the community one stop. Got positive feedback, so I'm thinking of applying for that this year. I'll come back to the board for approval on that, of course. I met with the Town Administrators of Rochester and Acushnit, going over different cost saving and just our budget issues. It's a regional, obviously, it's a statewide, national issue. Just fixed costs going up, just cost of business is going up. But I did learn a few good things from them. And then I'd like to thank both Member Day and Member Carboni, as well as the department heads and Jake Archenclos for the roundtable discussion we had this past week. I thought it was a pretty good conversation. He's pretty sharp, obviously, with his back and forth, but helpful nonetheless. That's all I have.
Can anybody have anything for Andrew? Thank you very much. All right, we have a few, a couple of meeting minutes here to, for approval. Select Board Meeting Minutes of February 3rd and February 10th. Did everybody have an opportunity to go through them? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of February 3rd, 2025.
So move.
A motion and a second and discussion. Tracy, I just had a couple of things. I know at the top you usually put the submitted by and then the date of approval. And I didn't know the page numbers. Don't you usually put page numbers on these?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, roll, please.
Donahue, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Can do your work.
Do aye.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of February 10th, 2025.
So move.
Motion and a second and discussion. I had one, Tracy, at the bottom of page six. Discuss schedule for Select Board member hours at the Council on Aging. Just the, who was taking what, it looks like you had Chair Fabian in there. I didn't have anything else here. Same thing at the top, just the submitted by approved. All right, there's nothing else, roll, please.
Donahue, I'm stain.
Carboni, aye.
Do aye.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I would like to invite Chief Perkins up to the table, please. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Have a good day. With the appointment that we had last month that brought us up to full staff in the police department, which leaves us with just one staffing issue to address, which is the vacant sergeant's position. Tonight, I come for you with my recommendation of Officer Emily Mello to be promoted to the rank of sergeant. Emily has been a police officer for 17 years. She's worked for the town of Lakeville for the past 13 years, even serving as an acting sergeant in 2020 when she filled in for a sergeant who was out injured. She's well-known in the community. She serves as the liaison to the senior population, works closely with the Council on Aging. She's well-known in law enforcement. She's part of the Southeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council's Critical Incident Stress Management Team. She's a peer support person. She helps police officers all across Southeast Mass. If we have a positive vote from the board tonight, the promotion aligns with our policy. She's passed the written examination. She's passed the assessment center. And she currently sits atop the candidate's list for promotion. And she has my 100% support and my 100% recommendation for her promotion to the rank of sergeant.
Excellent. All right. Well, with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Emily Ann Mello as a sergeant in the Lakeville Police Department for a probationary period through February 4th, 2026, and with the term to expire February 24th, 2028. Or we can go out to July 31st, 2028, so.
What is that?
Yeah, Tracy, I know you made.
The police appointment expires July 31st, 2020, annually each year.
Okay.
So it's up to you whether you want to bring this up in line with the other ones or just have it separate.
So then I'll.
The probation period was generated February 24th.
You said four. Oh, so February 24th. And then I'll do the term to expire July 31st, 2028.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, discussion. Very happy to be here today.
Yes, these are, these are the great things. There's not a lot of great things that come before the Select Board, but this is one of these things and it's an easy yes. I worked, I've worked with Emily Ann over the years and we got to know each other, especially through COVID, just being like a ever-present in town and making sure she's taking care of the people at the COA. And it's just, it's a wonderful thing to see someone grow into the position and the role and have homegrown people. It's the ideal that we want, so very impressed and it's a big yes for me.
Clearly, we have the support of the rest of the crew, so.
Just to echo what Member Candito said, every single interaction with Emily Ann's been fantastic. Always bright, always there with a laugh if you need it to. COA and the director have always had very high remarks to say. And at town meeting, I'm always pleased to know she's protecting herself on the left side of the state. Very well deserved.
Thank you.
All right, roll, please.
Donahue, you guys.
Carboni, aye.
Do aye.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, we're just gonna, we're gonna have Emily's mom, Marisa, come up and pin her badge on. And then the town clerk, Louis, and Drains, gonna give her her old blouse.
I am Emily Ann Mello.
I am Emily Ann Mello.
To solemnly affirm.
To solemnly affirm.
That I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitutionally, the United States of America.
And the Constitution and the laws of the commonwealth.
And the Constitution and the laws of the commonwealth.
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts.
The bylaws of the town of Lakeville.
The bylaws of the town of Lakeville.
The rules and regulations of the town of, of the police department.
The rules and regulations of the police department.
And I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police sergeant.
The duties of a police sergeant.
In and for.
In and for.
For which I have been appointed.
For which I've been appointed.
Appointing to the law.
Appointing to the law.
For the town of Lakeville.
For the town of Lakeville.
During my continuance, my continuance of office.
During my continuance of office.
Effective.
Effective.
February 24th.
February 24th.
2025.
2025. Thank you, everyone who came out, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
You deserve it.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
I got you. I don't know. All right. So we're moving on to agenda item number six. Is Attorney Shawnee, no or not tonight?
No.
So you will be here in.
I'm here in his presence.
All right.
His absence, I guess. Emissary.
Councilor.
All right, so in front of us this evening, Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Engineering Consultants is here to talk about a conceptual comprehensive plan for a residential subdivision at 6 Barstow Street. So normally, we don't usually see you at this point in the game, so this is kind of a nicety. It's kind of like a prequel, I guess, to the whole process. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Jamie, if you wouldn't mind, and we'll set to speed.
All right, well, good evening, Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineering, for the record. In front of you is a conceptual plan. And you're right, typically, what we've done in the past is we've met with town departments unofficially. This is, I believe, the first time we've reached out and actually been invited to meet with the Selectmen on a project that's this small. Usually, the bigger ones that turned into 40Rs, we've, we've met with the Selectmen on. But this is a 20 lot, comprehensive permit, is what we're looking to do here. A little bit different than some of the 40Bs that you've seen. This one, we're looking to do single-family houses on. It kind of fits in with the characteristic of the neighborhood. As you can see, this is Myrick Street, which is Route 79. They're gonna be relocating the intersection with Mass DOT, which will help with our access out of the site. It'll actually provide us with what I believe to be a better sightline. It'll get rid of an intersection where you could have some confusion. Essentially, this property makes up two pieces. One is 6 Barstow Street, the other one is 127 Precinct Street. The 127 Precinct Street just has a single-family house out on essentially Myrick Street. And the 6 Barstow is an equestrian facility. The property owner wants to keep the equestrian facility. That's the most common question I would imagine that I'll get. And right now, they house approximately 40 to 50 horses. They're looking to keep somewhere in that range, maybe a reduction of about 10 at the most, going forward. And as you can see, we've been able to keep the main parts of the paddock, some of the operating areas. And then there's a large indoor area down here that's also being kept, so that it can still function as a whole. They do have to give up a little bit of area over in this vicinity that's working, but they believe they can make that work. All of that being said, we're looking to bring this forward as a friendly 40B. I know that that's a word that's thrown around sometimes. In this case, the reason that we're looking for it to be a friendly 40B is we feel like, in looking at it, we haven't tried to maximize the number of lots. We haven't scrunched them down to the smallest they can be. The lots are between a quarter and a third of an acre each. The roadway, as shown right here, is 24 foot wide. We have the traditional right-of-way width on here as well. We're showing, you know, residential houses conceptually with garages. We're looking to do something that would fit in if we had an open space subdivision regulation or something along those lines. This would probably be something that it would fit into. So that being said, right now, like I said, there's 20 units. The proposed roadway on here roughly runs about 13, 1,250 to 1,300 linear feet. And the last part of it is that we're meeting with the zoning board on Thursday. So tonight, what we were hoping to do is give you our presentation. Whether you have feedback tonight or not, that's fine. Our goal is we meet with you, we meet with zoning board and any other board that, you know, wants us to appear in front of them. We're going to apply with, with Mass Housing, one way or another, for, for a eligibility letter. At that point, they'll also send you a request for comments, which is very standard in Select Boards and zoning boards have always had comments in the past. So we believe that's gonna be the process forward, but we're happy, this, this early in the process, to take any, any feedback, any comments, any thoughts, and present it to the, you know, the client and see if it's something we can work into this.
Okay, so there's 19, right?
There's 20.
So we're including the conceptual lot for the existing house will be included in that?
That would, yes.
Okay. And so with 20, it would be, two would be affordable?
Five.
Five would be affordable, okay.
Yep, it's one out of every four.
And are these one-level homes?
We, we don't have that 100% nailed down. The concept that we're going with right now is we're trying to spread something that would work with the town. Going through the housing plans and the master plan for the town, it's changed over the years from the 2017 to the newer one, I believe. But the thought process is with the town working with the developer, also providing a spot that you can have housing for first-time homebuyers. We don't want to necessarily build massive houses that are gonna push first-time homebuyers out. This is more of a first-time homebuyer neighborhood, I believe. But we also don't want to pigeonhole ourselves because the economy can do funny things. So our thought process right now is probably colonial farmhouse-style houses. We'd like to, you know, make it look as if it's not the same house at every single lot. And hopefully, the thought process is starter houses to family-style houses. So there'll probably be two floors with a two-car garage.
Anybody else?
Approximate square footage that you're looking for?
As shown right there, the, the box itself is about 1,350 square feet. So that's including the garage. It's very classic. Yep.
My other question would be, is this phase one of many or is this just phase? Is this the only one?
As you can see, we left an opening over here. And again, we're, we're not gonna hide anything. The main reason for that is, yes, in the future, if they do want to take and develop more, we have the ability to. But the other main reason for it is the property owner wants to keep the access for himself. He's gonna maintain ownership, from my understanding of the equestrian facility. So his thought process, he actually, from the plan we originally submitted to you to that, he actually had me widen it, you'll notice. So it's, it's actually greater than what a right-of-way would need. And he, he just wanted to have more access over to the property.
Will you tell me about the intersection again? Did you address that at all?
Sure, so Mass DOT is redoing parts of 79. And from the plans that actually, I believe, the Select Board's office provided us, 79 up here is gonna lose this part of the intersection and they're gonna come up and curve with a stop sign here. So this will no longer merge going this way. This will essentially, this part will be deleted.
Okay.
So what that does is, if you're looking at it, this actually provides a nice, easier exit as opposed to having a road and non-road for us coming out. It is actually perfect timing for us.
And how far down? I guess I could probably see this myself. Oh, it's a little further down when it goes into the Taunton, was it South Street off to the right? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, this, this property stretches significantly beyond what we see in the picture here, because it goes all the way down to like the Golden Tulip Park, what used to be Golden Tulip.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it goes pretty much, there's a culvert that runs down and underneath the road. It runs down into that vicinity. So if you drive by and you look, you'll see flowing water going under the roadway. It encompasses right to, roughly in that area. So the farm field that's out down here, that is part of this piece.
Now, should all of this progress, you know, on schedule? When are you looking to start the project?
You know, that I don't have an answer for you on. We're really just starting. I mean, really just starting. So this is, if, if we could get through this process in the next nine months to, to a year, we'd probably get started shortly after that. But I don't know, I don't know how things are gonna line up.
If there were going to be more phases, would the phases come off of this branch, basically? Or would there be more private roads going in in different areas? Or would this be coming through here and then branching off?
I can tell you that we have not laid out any additional phases. That's, and I mean, I live in town. I've, I've been in front of you guys for 20-plus years. I have not laid out another layout here. This is all we've laid out. In complete honesty, there is the chance that there'll be one. I did not hide it because I put the radius point right there to make it abundantly clear. I don't want anyone to think I'm misleading them. But we have not laid out any further lotting of this since here. We've looked at, prior to this, we looked at several different layouts, more units. But that was, this is, this is the plan that we're going with, with no phase two in mind as, as this point.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
You made a, nice to see you, Jamie. There was a statement you made earlier, which maybe I just interpreted wrong. You said something on the lines of the owner would like them to keep the equestrian facility. So is it under different ownership now?
No.
So the owner still owns it?
Yes, yeah. Basically, what I, what I try to do is I try to make statements that if something does, if they do change hands eventually, that you're not looking at me saying, hey, you led us to believe they were gonna own it. My understanding is he intends to keep it. There's, he's led me to believe nothing different. So my understanding is he's gonna keep ownership of the equestrian facility. But maybe somebody does buy it between now and then. That's unbeknownst to me.
Because they, if Member Sergeant's right, they removed this from Chapter 61 Protection over a year ago. So the town's right of first refusal is gone.
It is.
They had come to us way back, but it wasn't gonna work. So I guess I'm with the two of you that have already said, like, it looks prime for further development. I don't know if there's any, if you've done any, you know, geological, geological assessment beyond this area to say, like, there's no way they could build here, there's no way they could build here. Like, how much of that land that's left is developable? Like, beyond what we have here in green?
This, this is a significant portion. It's not, I mean, it's, it's a large lot, but it's not hundreds of acres. I believe it's around 40 acres. So it's not like we're gonna be proposing 600 house lots here. If, if there are, I don't know where they would come from.
Right.
And as you can see down over in here, there is a vegetated wetland that we've delineated and that does run up over along the side. So there are some wetlands on site. Yeah.
How large is that area for development? Is that?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, so there's roughly 20 lots. And if we called it a quarter of an acre each, we'd probably be somewhere around five, six acres in total.
Okay, that just gives me a visual.
I would say with the drainage basins and the road, probably call it seven.
Okay. Now, as far as the water lines, I don't know where it ends here, but, and I was asking the question of when this would be starting because of the 79 project that's supposed to be starting in, you know, 2026 at some point. But, you know, and again, I don't know if the, you know, the water, people are gonna be asking for water at this point, you know, if the water line's gonna be down. Because if the road is, is going to be torn up, it's always a good opportunity to kind of look at that. Because the last thing anybody wants to do is to go in and, you know, rip up a.
Yeah, no, absolutely not.
Causes way too many, you know, issues down the line. So just trying to, you know, wrap my head around the timing of it all.
I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I've already had one resident reach out, which I expected. On Barstow Street, there's already concerns from some residents that some of the uplands, and I don't know the area well enough, so please do correct me.
Sure.
That some of the uplands there are already draining onto their properties now and they're concerned that, you know, I see you've got drainage basins such here, but they're very concerned that any further development behind Barstow is gonna cause additional runoff. And they're, you know, not sure what it will or won't do to their property.
Sure, so, I mean, as, as you know, with the zoning board, if this goes forward, the zoning board typically hires a peer reviewer that reviews any plans that we put together. And they would make sure that our plans met stormwater and local requirements. So I would say that at the end of the day, the, the problems should either stay the same or get slightly better, or maybe really better in some cases. But they should not get worse. Our job is to make sure that they don't get worse.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I think it's a nice project. I think I look forward to seeing more. My biggest concern about it was that intersection because that's a bad intersection. But with those stop signs, I think that's really helpful for traffic and safety. I don't know, I just appreciate what you said.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
I mean, it's similar to what Member Donahue said, like, I like the fact that you've not tried to cram it as much as possible. Like, these do, for now, at least theoretically, look like actual true starter homes that we have very little inventory in town for. So it is nice to see that. I would love to see us overlay MassDOT's plans on that, just to get a better visual. Because the first, soon as I saw this coming, I'm like, how is this gonna work?
Sure.
Just a lot of moving parts in that area over the next few years.
There are, I agree. And, and that will actually be something we're gonna, we'll have to do during the design phase.
Okay.
I'm positive of it because they'll want site distances to be able to pull out into the road, so there's, yeah.
Madam Chair, question from Town Administrator. Under the 40R zoning starter home from 2017, is there any way this would qualify under those standards?
It's possible.
Because that's one of their standards, is around 1,300 square foot starter home, dense. I know there's got some standards about the highway access and et cetera. So just wanted to.
Yeah, I can certainly look.
Know if that is a option, as it would be a benefit to the town. In perpetuity.
Yeah, right. I can look it up, but I think offhand, it's a good chance.
Yeah, yeah, 2017, yeah, small.
With the square footage on that, is that the total square footage or is that the square footage for, for the footprint? Because on some of these units, if, if not all, we were thinking they would have second floors.
I don't remember specific, but I'll, I'll let Andrew speak to that. But I remember it was 1,300 square feet for a starter home. That was. That was...
I'll reach out to Andrew later on this week or next week.
Sounds good. And Nancy actually asked me her first day about it's forty-Y. Now, is what it's under, I can, we can connect and get an answer.
Got it, because there could be options there, um, that that allow for.
Yeah, looks like it goes up to eighteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Of heat, of heated living space.
I think that's completely reasonable for what you're saying you're looking for in this project. And if we were to be able to go forward with these type of projects and mitigate some of the the impacts with our, um, forty-S money, um, it would be a benefit.
Hmm.
Um, question through you, Madam Chair. How many bedrooms are you thinking these will be?
Probably three.
It's first thing, says at least fifty percent of the homes in starter home zoning district must have three or more, so.
Yeah.
Take a box.
How's that a starter home, though? That's...
I know.
That's enormous.
Well, it doesn't say how big the bedrooms have to be.
Yeah, could be.
That's nuts.
They do.
Be an eleven-by-eleven room.
Yeah.
Not even a closet.
They have offices that they count as bedrooms and stuff like that.
Has a closet.
But a, so a four-bedroom house is a starter home?
Three.
But it's three at least.
Yes.
Yeah, but no, I I agree. I'm I'm with you a hundred percent. It should be two bedrooms for a starter home.
One for you, one for the kids, that's just how you were starting.
Third one's like usually a guest room or an office these days.
Right. All right, thank you, Andrew.
Great, I guess we're we're good, Jamie.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, everybody.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, nice to see you.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to agenda item number seven. Why don't you come on up? Were you looking to do a screening?
We have a presentation, I also have handouts. If that's easier, whichever whichever you prefer.
Handouts are fine. We have them a little larger. Okay. Don't fall, please. It's a maze. Thank you very much. Would you leave another copy with, um, with our Town Administrator, so we can make sure that, um, member Fabian receives it?
Actually, there's an extra, two extras.
Leave it there, fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you can make sure that gets into her inbox, that would be great. Well, welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a little while.
It has. We're due for an update, that's partially why we're here.
Yeah, yeah.
For the record, John O'Leary, uh, with Rhino Capital.
Sam Randall, Rhino.
Um, so it's good to see you all again. Um, I think the last time we were in front of you, I wanna say it was like maybe June? So it's been, it's been a while since we were last here. Um, we wanted to provide you all with an update on on where this project stands. Um, and in part of that, also discuss, um, as the the title suggests, um, some grant funding opportunities that we're hoping to pursue, um, with with your help. Um, so the goal today, again, like I said, is just to sort of give you all an update and just kind of walk through where we stand and then talk about kind of what we're thinking, what we're, where we're, where our challenges are, um, and what we're thinking of targeting, um, to try to overcome those hurdles. So, um, to take a quick step back, project in general, um, so not much has changed, I think, since we were last in front of you in terms of what we were designing. Um, generally speaking, the the master plan, um, is the same. And for those that aren't aware, this is the, uh, former Lakeville State Hospital site located forty-three Main Street. Quick highlights, sort of three main components of the project. Um, southernmost portion of the of the plan or of the project, closest to Main Street is a senior living, uh, campus, uh, named the Wingate Residences. That's a hundred and ninety units of senior living, a mix of assisted living, uh, memory care and independent living. Um, as you move further north on the site, um, you come to the Cranberry Heights Residences, which is a two-hundred-unit, um, multifamily project permitted through Chapter forty-B. Um, and then furthest north, you come to the Fox Estates, which is a sixty-eight-unit, uh, age-qualified active adult, fifty-five and over, um, cottage home, um, project with a five-thousand-square-foot clubhouse servicing those residences. Um, and then very top of the page, uh, is sort of the two main components that we're we're wanna focus on this evening, which is, one, the wastewater treatment plant, which is a seventy-five-thousand-gallon-per-day, uh, wastewater treatment plant that will service all four-hundred-and-fifty-eight units that are proposed. Um, and then sort of faintly outlined in orange, um, is the approximate limits of an existing unlined and unpermitted landfill. It's about one-point-one acres, a little over eleven-thousand cubic yards of material, uh, that previously serviced the, um, hospital operation. Um, so I think as as, or I guess I should say, just to kind of give everyone again an update, in early January, um, we received unanimous approval from the planning board, uh, for the Fox Estates and the Wingate Residences. Uh, in late January, we received unanimous approval from the zoning board for, uh, the Cranberry Heights Residences. Um, in early December, oh, sorry, late December, um, we received an an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission for work within the buffer zone and direct wetland impacts related to the landfill removal. Um, the slide says Ameepa project, or Ameepa review will be complete. It actually is complete. Um, we received our Ameepa certificate, um, middle of last week. Um, and at this point, really, the only outstanding permitting items that that we have left are some state-level permitting for the treatment plant and, uh, wetland impacts, uh, to the Vernal Pool, which is exists in that northwestern corner of the, or eastern corner of the property. So we're substantially complete with permitting. It's, it has been a long road, and we're really happy with with where we've gotten. It's been a collaborative effort, um, with the town, with, um, state, uh, state folks, with, uh, incredible project team, um, that we're really proud of. And we believe it's sort of highest and best use for the property, um, the densest use that 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 we could get to try to absorb some of the extraordinary costs, um, that we're facing as part of this. Um, but unfortunately, despite all of that, the project is financially inflexible in its current state. Um, we have been hitting our heads against the wall, trying to figure out a way to to make this work, and unfortunately, have just continuously come up short. Um, where we believe there's opportunity, though, is that, as I think most everyone is aware, the state has has really prioritized housing preservation and housing creation. Um, there is a housing housing shortage in the state in this country. I don't think anyone's, I don't think that's news to anybody. Um, and our project really hits on a lot of the key, um, uh, elements that the state is is trying to, uh, is trying to achieve. And and fortunately, they've, they've really put their money where their mouth is and and put a lot of funds in place to try to spur housing development, which we're we're hoping to try to key in on. Unfortunately, um, many of the opportunities or the grant, uh, programs, as a private developer, we're just not eligible for. Um, municipal agencies and municipalities are the only eligible applicants. Um, and so what we're here today to speak to you about, all about, is sort of how do we try to get to a point where we can, um, become eligible and and try to leverage some of those, some of those funding opportunities? Um, so I think I I sort of hit on the the biggest ones, but, you know, the the extraordinary costs as it relates to remediation and demolition of the buildings, removal, a remediation and removal of a solid waste disposal area, and the construction of a wastewater treatment plant amidst what is already challenging economic times from just a a construction perspective. And given what's going on at the at the federal level, we're gonna continue to see construction pricing increases, unfortunately. Um, so there, there's significant headwinds as it as it relates to this project. And, um, you know, we have a state and a and a governor that is supportive of these types of projects, so we're hopeful to try to leverage those opportunities, um, that exist. But, excuse me, but it's it's just struggling right now. Um, so I just included some existing conditions photos, just to kind of show the the state of the property. Um, you know, we wanna clean this up just as much as as everybody else. I mean, we own it, um, and we really wanna wanna see that redeveloped. Um, so what's next? What are we, what are we targeting? As I mentioned, the state has really kind of put their money where their mouth is, um, and has authorized that, again, I apologize if any of this is redundant, and I'm sure most of you are aware, but, um, Governor Healy signed in to, uh, law, the Affordable Homes Act, which is a five-point-two billion, roughly five-point-two-billion-dollar, um, spending bill, uh, which will be, uh, used throughout the next five years. Um, as part of that, has really sort of reestablished, um, some funds as it relates to the One Stop for Growth. Um, so the Community One Stop for Growth is a streamlined application portal that's open and eligible for municipalities. Um, and again, I apologize if any of this is redundant, but, um, that that One Stop for Growth that allows access to twelve different funding platforms administered by three different state-run, uh, organizations, um, it really is, as quote, "critical funding that spurs housing and economic development by investing in the public infrastructure, preparing sites and cleaning up brownfields to prepare them for development and supporting vibrant downtowns." Um, so we checked the box for a lot of these, a lot of these opportunities, but there's two that we're really specifically targeting, um, which really kind of hit on two of the major hurdles, um, that we're coming across. The first is the Brownfields Redevelopment Fund, which is targeted by, or, or, excuse me, administered by Mass Development. The second is the Housing Works Infrastructure Program, which is administered by Housing Livable Communities. Um, our our first sort of, you know, goal or or or, um, target, um, is is really the Brownfields Redevelopment Fund, um, which, in their words, is "used for environmental site assessment or remediation activities conducted by a Massachusetts licensed site professional or a licensed site remediation contractor in conformance with Massachusetts contingency plan." Um, key here, and again, this is the key across the board, is that the lead eligible applicant is municipalities, municipal agencies, or authorities, economic development, industrial corporations, or economic development authorities. As a private developer, we're not eligible, um, for these, for these funds and to be an applicant. And that's why we're here tonight, is to discuss with you all about how we can find a way to move forward. It's the case across the board with all of the One Stop for Growth programs. Um, specifically, again, what we're, what we're one of, what we would like to focus on and discuss with you tonight is is really the Brownfields Redevelopment, and that's geared towards that landfill removal and remediation. Um, the Housing Works Infrastructure one is another one that we're targeting. Um, this really hits the nail on the head for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, but we wanna spend tonight, and what we wanna discuss is really the Brownfields. Um, you know, I think, I think, you know, how how does this benefit you all? How does this benefit the town? I mean, I think the, the common theme since I've been working here in Lakeville, which first came across this property almost five years ago, which isn't all that long, but for me, it's been a while, um, and I've spent a lot of time trying to see this site cleaned up. I mean, common, common theme across the board for everybody involved is just clean this place up. That's what everybody wants to see, and that's what this would would go towards, is remediation, um, of the landfill. There's more cleanup to be done, and we're gonna continue to try to find buckets of capital, um, to do that and are committed to doing that. Um, but we believe that this Brownfields Redevelopment Fund is really well positioned, um, for for this project to see that, um, that landfill be removed. Um, and that's really what we wanna focus on, um, and what we're hoping for your support here this evening. Um, in in terms of project costs, we we have worked with, um, uh, our engineers at VHB, we have had a handful of qualified contractors come through and price this thing. We have a lot of research on it, we have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna cost, um, to do. Um, and I think the important piece is, is that this project, should we come to, uh, should we find an arrangement that makes sense, the town would not be burdened with any cost. Um, that the cost, the 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 money would come from the state, would go directly towards the remediation, any cost overages, we would structure it in a way such that we, as the, as the site owner, would be responsible for for any cost overages there. So just wanna make sure that everyone understands that there is no added cost, um, as it relates to the town. Um, the last piece here, and 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 then I'll, and then I'll stop talking. Um, uh, you know, I I think forty-B is obviously a a very hot topic, um, across the board. Just had another presentation before us. Um, the Cranberry Heights Residences would put Lakeville into Safe Harbor. Um, this, uh, would exceed, uh, that ten percent, ten percent affordable threshold. Um, with this project, Safe Harbor, as I think maybe you're aware, would would allow you, um, and the town and the zoning board to effectively deny, um, further forty-B projects. Um, the state requires a a ten percent threshold for all towns to be in. Um, and so with our project, all two-hundred units count towards your, um, your, your, uh, yeah, yes, they try, excuse me, thank you, Sam. So, um, subsized housing inventory list, which would then put you above your ten percent threshold. Being above that ten percent threshold means that you ha- have the ability to say no effectively. Um, did I skip anything? If I have or anything, Sam? Okay.
There's a timeline, yes.
Okay, last, and then I actually will stop talking, answer questions. Um, just a couple, just a couple of quick notes. The, uh, expression of interest, which is a non-binding, um, letter, which just, you know, you you summarize your project, supply that to the state. They give some feedback on, hey, we believe you're well-positioned, hey, this is what we need. They just give you some helpful feedback, that's due by March twenty-sixth. And then the One Stop Application Deadline itself is is, um, June fourth. Um, as this, as if this effort progresses, um, we would envision that Rhino would take on the bulk of all application material. We have, uh, a project team in, um, VHB, SAM, um, attorneys. We have a a team that knows this well, knows how to navigate these processes well. We've partnered with a lobbyist who's who's representing us on on Capitol Hill. So we have a really well-built-out project team. The concept would be that we would put up, put forth all of the legwork, and then essentially the town would just click submit on the application. Um, and we understand there's a lot of conversation and negotiation to go, and there's a lot of information to hear this evening. Um, so we totally understand that this is an ongoing conversation. We expect and anticipate, um, to have a lot more discussions. Hopefully, we have some answers for you all tonight. I'm sure we won't have all of them, and and, um, we hope to kind of keep an open dialogue and try to figure out a way to make this happen. At the end of the day, you know, we wanna see this project move forward. Um, this isn't really a, uh, Rhino's trying to find a way to make more money. That's really not it at all. Um, this is really more of a function of this project won't happen, um, this site won't get cleaned up, um, unless we find a creative way to make that happen. And so that's why, that's why we're here in front of you all this evening. So with that, I conclude.
Um, I know you indicated here, um, that there were other municipalities that have done, you know, similar. I mean, we all know how long this project, um, or that property, you know, has been in discussion. And I think that this was the most viable and attractive, you know, option. And, um, you know, there was a lot of buying and support for this. So, um, I'm curious to see, you know, what the other municipalities are that did something similar to this. Um, because, you know, of course, my head's running through, okay, we're a clearinghouse. You know, we're the ones that are, you know, putting the the request through. But then where does the oversight come from? You know, for that to see the project through and, you know, whatever... I mean, you obviously mentioned that you would provide the resources. So there's reporting that has to be done, you know, on any type of grant program. And, um, so those are the logistics that, you know, kind of go through my head for at first thought, so.
So to answer your second question, I'm working on another project, not with Rhino, but with another group, where we were awarded Max, Mass Works Funds. Um, and just so you know, the the developer, um, essentially does all of the reporting. Like, in that case, the municipality reaches out, like, when the report is due or ahead of the report being due, and the developer orchestrates making sure that all of that information is included. They literally send it to the municipality, who then sends it in for reporting. So that's, that's the type of arrangement we would, um, we would think about here. Is is really taking the burden off of the town, because we understand that it will cost time, um, and money to continually, um, seek that reporting, so that's something that we would take on. Um, we also have a list of comparable... We also have a list of comparable um awards for each of the programs and municipalities. One in Great Barrington, which was, this is regarding the Brownfields Fund, which is the one that we think would be a good fit for the cleanup of the landfill and the remediation of the landfill. That award was $2 million. It was a, a site that was previously used by New England Log Homes as a treatment and manufacturing facility. So there was a significant amount of remediation that needed to happen as part of that um project, which then I believe um was developed into like a park and affordable housing or some mix of housing. Uh, that was a $2 million award. That's one example. We have a few others. I don't know if you want to hit on any of the other Brownfields.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, through you, would you mind sending us that list?
Yeah.
So we can research it.
Yes.
As much as I like hearing about it here.
Totally.
I'd like to be able to see what's going on.
Yeah.
I think the, the biggest one that was sort of therapeutic for me in a sense was I had a conversation with the folks from Trinity Financial, who are a phenomenal group. They do a lot in the affordable housing space. They are currently going through the process of redeveloping, redeveloping the Medfield State Hospital, which is a behemoth of a project. They have been able to find a way to make it work with keeping the existing buildings in place. So it's a little bit different. Medfield also owns that site, which makes it also a little, little unique. But they were in the last cycle for, for um one stop. They were awarded $4.48 million for infrastructure improvements as well as $500,000 for other infrastructure improvements. My conversation with the project lead at Trinity Financial said that they're seeking $30 million of funding over the next five years. We aren't seeking nearly that much. So it was, like I said, a bit therapeutic to hear that there are other people that are facing similar daunting challenges and are finding a way to make it work. But that's just, again, we, we can provide a list.
And you had um touched upon costs because that was obviously, you know, something that um was going to be a question. I'm sure that this board would have asked. So with regards to the cleanup, there's a cost associated with that in your minds? What would that be?
Specifically for the landfill removal, we have a high end and low end. Unfortunately, landfill is challenging to kind of know exactly what that, what that bogey is. High end is $2.1 million, 2.16. And unfortunately, that has climbed over since we first started working on this project, largely due to disposal facilities um and their rates. So that quote was as of November. I had that pulled, repulled, so um it's a few months dated at this point.
So if, let's just say that this all went through and, you know, we were awarded, you know, $2.16 million for, for this cleanup. And it ended up, I know that you had said that it wouldn't come back on the town. Because that's something we could not ask for our ta- taxpayers.
Hundred percent.
That would, I, I, it would be illegal.
Yeah.
But um, so if in fact, if it ended up being, let's just say, you know, 500, a million dollars in additional um that you would be covering, I would just hope that that wouldn't be a point where you would have no return. Like, I guess the commitment would be that we're going to see this through.
Yeah, and it's our intention as part of this conversation, negotiation, is to put together a memorandum of understanding that will be a legally binding document that outlines exactly what you just stated, which is that we would be responsible for any cost overages. And that would be spelled out via contract essentially.
I do have a question for you, Andrew. So if in fact, you know, let's just say that we were awarded this particular, you know, grant. We applied, we, we received it. Does that put us in, out of any running for other additional grants under the program?
It's hard to say. I mean, generally speaking, the more money you get from the state, the less likely you are to get the next round. But I think for a project like this, where it's a former state hospital with a, the state were the ones that put us in this situation, they might look more kindly, but I can't say for certain one way or the other.
Hi, um, thank you. I just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. You can't apply for grants, only municipality can. So you're asking us to give you the okay to draft it all and just have us look it over it and okay it, and then you submit it? So you're doing all the legwork and everything? Okay. So my question, next question is to you guys. What is the negative of this? I, because I'm not seeing any, like, I don't think they can rewrite what they're doing in these grants. They, I don't think they can do something. So what would a negative be?
Madam Chair. Just like Andrew was saying, the negative would be that the state doesn't always fund the same place, the same at time with, for different projects. So there is a risk to other projects that we might want to be able to do in town.
Gotcha.
But that's the only thing that I can think of because remediating a brownfield that has been festering there since 1992, 94 i- is a positive.
Yeah.
What, what level of cleanup are you going to hit for the landfill?
It'll, it'll be completely rem- remediated and removed. We will, we will not be able to accept any um activity use limitation because typically an AUL would restrict residential use. Be like, it only allow commercial use. That obviously doesn't work for us. So it'll be completely and entirely remediated. Fortunately, the, the, the investigation and the research that our project engineers have done thus far is that really the, the contaminants of concern are asbestos-related. From really, they, what it seems like is they were dumping uh construction debris, cloths, bedding, things like that into that landfill. So the majority of the material that we found has been asbestos-related to construction debris. And a fairly, luckily, and hopefully this is the case, a fairly concentrated area of that. Done about, I want to say, six or eight different test pits across, across that acre, and we'll continue to hopefully do more to continue to qualify it and get that number, that 2.1 million dollar number tighter. But that's, that's, that's the goal is to have it.
The only other concern I would have, um, so I think you guys are going to draft the MOU to demonstrate municipal site control. I just don't know what the liability would be on the town, even if we have the, and that, that's without a legal opinion.
I want zero.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Right. And that would probably be in the MOU, um, that we would make sure any liability goes there. Madam Chair, through you. My other concern is um as much as the landfill is a hazard, removing a landfill uh could be hazardous as well when it comes to what's below uh that area, which is an aquifer.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to map it out, like exactly on that map where the aquifer, like touches. But I believe part of it touches right where that landfill is, if I'm remembering it correctly.
I don't know how far it went up. I know it's, it's right behind the Eastern Bay. That's where their um test um spot is. But I know where that is. It's further north, right? Or further, whatever. It's further that way. So I'm not sure. But I don't know where it goes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are you talking about the pond?
No.
No.
There's, there's um, there's an aquifer under there that um is regularly tested for water levels.
Remember that, right?
I believe it's further south, as you mentioned. I think it's, I know where that, that.
Yeah. Because it was on, it was on the property just behind.
Disturbing it is of concern.
Don't, yeah, totally understood. And we, I can, I can, we can get you a map so we know exactly where that is. I just wouldn't feel confident speaking to you right now.
Yeah, that's one of those hidden gems that, you know, it's out there.
Yep.
A few questions, if I may, Madam Chair. We'll come back to you. When, when did ZBA approve the comprehensive permit? Do you know the date on that by chance?
So uh, January 28th, um, hearing was closed, vote was taken. I don't, I saw a draft of the final decision last week. I don't know if it has been stamped by the town clerk at this point, but we were good with the way it was, so.
So that starts a clock, as you're probably aware. So in your presentation, when you're saying this project's going to put us in safe harbor, that's a very broad statement.
Yes.
I wouldn't put it like that because from the time that you got that ZBA stamp, you've got 12 months. If it takes longer than 12 months, none of the housing qualifies for SHI until you get building permit. Then you get 18 months to get occupancy permits. What's the chances you're going to build and have occupancy in 18 months?
It, it, it should be, that should, that shouldn't be that far off. If, if, when we pull the building permit, we truly start construction and go, it shouldn't be longer than an 18-month construction process.
Just trying to outline is, we're going to be in this period of in, out, in, out, in, out. There's plenty of other projects looking at us right now. So I don't, I, I think there's going to be another, a number of projects that get completed well before we even get into safe harbor. If it's you guys or another, whoever's first, I think is going to be the one who gets us there. The other question I would have is, what changed? When did this go from feasible to infeasible? Because in none of our conversations, not in our site walk, you and I were talking about probably going to start demo spring, summer of 2025. When did this change?
We've known that we were up against this challenge from the start. We were, we were hopeful that we were going to find a way to make it work, that the market wasn't going to totally flip upside down on us, that we were going to figure out a way to capitalize this and get this to move forward. But we knew we were up against a pretty extraordinary cost. You know, we, to date, we've spent a little over $11 million on this project between site acquisition, um, our first redevelopment attempt, our second redevelopment attempt. That number got bigger and bigger, um, to the point where it is now. Unfortunately, we're just, it, it's too challenging um for us to try to take it on. I, I don't, I don't think that, I don't have a great answer for when exactly we knew this was going to be a challenge. I think we knew it was going to be a challenge all along. And our focus was, let's get to a point where we actually have a project that we can move forward with.
Because in my mind, hear me out, if you had an inkling that that was a challenge you're up against, did you tell ZBA? Did you tell Conservation? Did you tell them? Because now I feel like you've gone through and expended all those resources to get that permitting in place. Now you're coming to us and saying, guys, unless you help us get another check, we're walking away. That could have altered the thought process and the discussions as you went through this other groups. So were they told that?
N- no, no. I think, I think we've.
Because we probably should have done this first. And said, we're willing to help you get through that process before going through everything else. This seems like a light lift compared to what you had to go through for ZBA and Conservation, everything else. It just feels at the last minute to be told this, like we're being, put a spotlight on us, like, well, here we go.
I hear your Mac, but I would, I would say that, you know, given that we had two site plan review processes and a 40B process with the ZBA, I don't know what would have changed through those processes. Like, I don't, I don't know if any of the conditions would have been different had we brought this challenge up. I mean, the other thing I would say is, you know, John's also not giving himself enough, enough credit. We've gone to like every larger developer in the area to try to see, like, what they think a project of this size and scale and magnitude could absorb in terms of like, just having the individual phases absorb these extraordinary upfront costs. And the market has really told us that, that this is, this is an extraordinary cost and not something that a project of this size can absorb without, without additional help from the state.
So April 24th, we were all in this room, and Rhino said that you would deliver a town of Lakeville an economic impact assessment and a analysis on new growth in the east part of this project. Where is that?
We have that, we can, we can present that to you.
Why wasn't it presented already? That's something we asked for, in terms of town administrator, specifically wanted to put into our budgeting process.
Okay, we, we, we're more than happy to present that material. I was going to have a slide that discussed it and presented it within this presentation. It is more than just a slide, so we thought it made more sense to have a follow-up conversation. That will go over all the details within that. There are three separate reports that analyzes each individual element, what the costs, what the estimated revenues are. But in summary, and again, we can, we'll, we can go over this in further detail, but estimated total revenue um at full buildout being $909,000. Just short, just short of a million dollars to the town. So again, we're happy to present all that material and share that with you, and I apologize that that wasn't something that was done earlier.
It's all, it's for me, a lot to take in in, in one night with all the moving parts and the history on this. I mean, I don't know what the board wants to do. I, I'm not, I'd say we need some kind of agreement with them, between them and the town to figure out what's going to happen moving forward. I don't think it's easy saying, yes, we'll do an MOU.
And I would like to talk to town council.
Yeah. I think we just need to have a conversation with town council. I just want to, um, because this is the first time that I know that I've experienced, you know, um, this type of scenario. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we are looking out for the best interests, you know, of the town. And we understand, you know, that that property is, you know, a liability for, you know, the town. We, we get that. This is just a shift in gears. And I want to make sure that we are educated enough in, in, you know, being smart shoppers, I guess, for making this big decision. So I think, you know, we're going to tail this up a little bit, I think, with our questions, you know, to town council. And so um, the deadline you said was March 26th?
For the expression of interest.
All right, and that would be um, postmarked? Just saying, I mean, technicality, but, or received by?
Received by, but it's submitted online. So click it and submits.
And, and we can, if, if, we, we can prepare that and present that expression of interest to you all at your next meeting so that you understand what it is that would be being submitted, so that you can have an informed discussion on what that looks like and what's represented in there. That's certainly something that we can prepare between now and then.
Madam Chair, not to beat a dead horse, but that would have been good to look at as well in, in this setting, for us to understand all the ins and outs um of what it is that we're being asked to do.
Is, is there, is this an annual program?
It's an annual program, yep. Awards, I believe in October, October, November is when they announce awards.
All right, so we'll have to schedule a time, um, a meeting with town council.
Yep, definitely. Not to complicate it more, but there is the bond bill hanging out there too. But we can bring that back at the next meeting and.
The what?
There's a bond bill.
Construction bond bill.
Yeah.
Okay.
That we were planning to use for a light and some other stuff. A long time ago.
Yeah, very long time ago, but it's, it's active till 2027.
Yeah.
So, yep.
All right, uh, so I guess um we'll add this to the agenda for um, what is it, March 11?
10.
10?
Doesn't leave much time.
No. Well, that's why I was asking all my questions. So Madam Chair, may I ask the town administrator? And I forgot already, see, this is why I need it emailed to me. What town was it that was redeveloping their hospital?
Medfield.
Medfield. Maybe reach out to uh whoever's handling the project at Medfield and get some of the finer points. I know it's different, you know, being town-owned versus whatever, but they'd at least know.
Right.
Timeframes, bells and whistles, all those.
Was Great Barrington?
Great Barrington was the other.
Was that private or public owned?
Don't know off the top of my head.
I believe that one was privately owned.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I have to.
We can get the details though. That was for the Brownfields.
Right.
Where Medfield was Housing Works.
And then I completely understand that this is coming up quickly, and this is a lot for you all to handle on, on uh, tonight. The, the expression of interest that's, that's um deadline at the end of March, that is a non-binding, just a, a letter. So just because that's submitted doesn't mean that we're in the queue that the process is started. That's just a way for us to provide, or the state to provide us uh feedback on what makes a good application.
Yep.
So just understanding that this is not very far away, it's.
So again, you're just asking for our okay for you to submit municipal qualifying grants?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see what the issue here is because, and that's just me verbalizing these thoughts. Lakeville needs to, you know, get off the pot. You know, we keep talking about, at this point, put the warehouse back. Like, we need to potentially sacrifice one year of development in order to do this, if this is what the town wants. Otherwise, just put the warehouse back. Because I'm so tired of everybody complaining about everything. This is great. Like, this makes sense. If you need help, then we should be helping them. So let's talk about it and ask council questions and everything, but this is a no-brainer to me.
And, and I think it's, we want to ensure that you all are protected. Like, we have no interest in putting the town at risk. Like, that is not at all what we're trying. Like, that is not at all what we're trying to do. We're not trying to slide anything under the rug. Like, we want this to be as open and as transparent as possible.
Develop your project.
We want, we wanna find a way-
You've worked hard, I get it.
Well, it, it might bear another question, then. Do you anticipate only the need for that two-point-one-six, sort of it was, for the landfill? Or is there, there's still remediation in the buildings? So is this gonna be, like, two-point-one-six this year, next year you come back and say, okay, we got that, now we need to get this? I mean, what happens if the state says you didn't get it the second year in?
So, our, so as it relates to the building demolition, that's kind of a, that's a, a separate bucket of capital and sort of a separate bogey that we're chasing.
Hmm.
The feedback that we've received is the state is very, has, has put in sort of protections in place to prevent them from being responsible for demolition work.
Okay.
Um, they'll do remediation work, but taking down buildings is really not something that they wanna be involved in. Um, I think they'd get too many applications, frankly, if that was the case. So we're trying to figure out another avenue for that one, specifically tax credits as it relates to brownfield redevelopments.
Hmm.
So that's kind of, that's one of the avenues that we're, that we're thinking. The other, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to explore that one as best we can. Um, what we do anticipate, and it was mentioned in, in here this evening, um, is that housing works infrastructure program for, um, the wastewater treatment plant. That's another that we think is really well positioned for that program. Um, but we don't wanna put in two applications, uh, in the same round, a su- round, um, of funding. And in addition, just in terms of order of operations, the landfill has to be gone in order for the treatment plant to go in, because they literally overlap. So, we have to get the landfill out first, so we'll do that first. And the feedback, again, getting some of the feedback that we've gotten is, once the state commits to your project, in essence, if they were to award us some money for the remediation, they kinda have egg on their face if they don't continue to support. So because they've already allocated funds in first round, it's likely you're, that they'll continue to support you in order to try to get it out of the ground. And we'll be open and transparent with them, they're like, hey, we're, again, this is what Medfield has done. That's thirty million dollars over five years. You know, we're, we're doing our research, we're really trying to make sure that we're going about this the right way. And I understand the concern, and I, and I hear you, that, that we should have been more transparent as soon as this came to be. And I apologize for that. Um, right now, we're, we're, we're trying to tackle this best we can.
All right, so our deliverables, um, you're going to be getting us, um, something.
A list of comparable projects.
Yep.
The economic analysis.
Economic analysis, yeah.
And Andrew, you're gonna reach out to-
Town council.
Great Barrington and-
Medfield.
Medfield. And town council. And you'll put together a letter.
We'll draft the expression of interest, we'll get that into your hands ahead of your meeting on the tenth, so that you have some time to review that, to read that, we can have a-
Okay.
Informed discussion.
Is the thought, and the thought is to wait on the MOU, right? So like, we don't wanna be too presumptuous and have, like, bullet points at the next meeting for what an-
No, I think that would be beneficial.
Okay. We can put that together, too, ahead of the meeting.
Yeah, I wanna get that two days ahead of time.
No.
Nope.
So.
Yeah.
So sooner, sooner you can get that to us.
Yep. We already have an example from another project that did it in, in Camden, so.
Okay.
You know, we're working with folks that specialize in this type of stuff.
Okay.
We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll see you on the tenth.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you wanna give them the time coming on the tenth?
Um, we'll reach out once we figure out what else we have coming on the tenth, and we'll arrange it, so.
Works for us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Okay. Now it's warm in here.
It's not, my feet are cold. Yep.
All right, I can tough it out. All right, agenda item number eight. Uh, we are revisiting our charge, uh, that we had, uh, approved.
Um, did we wanna find out if these people are waiting for-
Are you here just to see us? We can move those up.
All right. As much as we like having an audience, I saw you guys looking forlorn.
All right, so we're gonna jump to agenda item number eleven.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I mean, I just, you know what, I get excited when I have people in the audience and I see them, and, oh, they're just here to, to just enjoy, so. All right.
Very interesting stuff, I'll give you a guess. Quite a bit of the fire station, you know, two interesting projects, I can't help but listen to this stuff. So, I'm Jeff Smith, I'm the race director for, um, outsider endurance Patriot. I, Cranberry utilized town and state roads in Lakeville. Um, I'm not sure which one's listed first, but Cranberry is August twenty-fourth here. That's the one that's hosted here at Ted Williams with park approval already in hand. And, um, then Patriot on June fourteenth just cycles through the town, um, for the month.
The first one in front of us is the Cranberry, um, Tri-Fest.
And what year is this in now?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth year. All right, and we've received all of our sign-offs from our, um, police. If we break here, it's got the Public Works, Inspection Services, Police and Fire.
Curious, Madam Chair, the event form notification dated January second was still missing all of our signatures. Fire, local.
What's that?
Madam Chair, that's the DOT form.
Correct.
So, um, that's the sign-up you-
Correct.
We need to update these forms. All right. Ten different fonts.
Uh, have you seen an increase in participation over the last few years, or do you think it'll be pretty?
It should be consistent, um, we don't have much room, more room for parking, so it's kind of at where it is. Um, we've stopped registration the last two years at this event, so. Uh, it's an extremely popular event, both here with residents, athletes in the town, and surrounding communities, for sure.
You know, it just jogged my memory, we did have a resident, um, attend one of our meetings previously, and I'm not sure which, which, um, event prompted it, but it might, it might have been this one, but, um, we just have to be very well aware, um, and if you can maybe find a way to communicate the message, uh, to the participants and the spectators, um, that any of the properties along the precinct street, um, you know, they've gotta make sure, one, that they're cleaned up, obviously, um, but not to sit on people's-
Uh, I think I saw this too, I didn't get a chance to talk to him. I saw him interacting with the police officer who was working in detail, and I couldn't quite hear the, uh, I'd be curious to know what happened.
I think it was volume of, of-
They put coffee cups all over his rock wall, and they went through his flowerbeds.
Yeah.
On race morning. There was more, too.
Yeah, and there was other-
I'd certainly be interested, um, I, I can't imagine anybody that is on staff for outsider endurance or the athletes would have done it, hopefully it was a coincidence of-
The spectators.
Okay, okay.
And then I think you also said they started too early.
Really early.
It was like five AM.
Yeah, and the, the race is early, but it's the volume of, uh, lots of people-
The speaker.
Tacking next to people that are sleeping on, now I'm doing it, now, the east side of, of, uh, of Ted Williams.
The east, so that would be-
Precinct Street, it's precinct.
This way?
Yep.
Um, so we don't have any, yeah, I mean, we have, we, yeah, you guys were pretty clear about, um, audible amplified noise being at, you know, seven-thirty or something like that, I think it was, so. I don't, I, I don't know, I, we'll certainly look into it, I'm not aware-
I think it's more the spectators is, is my, that was my thing, so, I, I think the participants-
We don't have any parking, none of our parking is over there, it's all inside of the park, obviously not on Bedford, not on the police station. Um, all parking is here, just, I don't know who would have been over there, to be honest with you.
Just have to make sure that, um,
For sure, yeah.
Can we offer any other parking? Nobody parking on that side of the street, you know, just-
There should, none of our, we, I mean, we have, uh, you know, the only people I can think of, maybe with our parking detail itself, the people, the young, uh, the volunteers from, uh,
Park at the school.
Um, Demolition Middlebury, they might, they might have been out there communicating, that's the only thing I can think of. But we'll certainly make a point of emphasis this year. Um, I can reach out outside of the meeting to, uh, offer my community, my, uh, info for that individual, so they can communicate exactly what happened. I'd be happy to give to talk to them.
Cause I mean, we wanna see these things, you know, continue to be successful, and, you know, I mean, they're, um, you know, to have the participation, and it's here, and, you know, it helps Lakeville.
Madam Chair, just a question, um, but I, I think the problem is, um, needing overflow parking, um, possibly? Is, is that-
Uh, we're happy with the, the size of the event, I mean, obviously we look to grow, but, um, I feel like it's a, for the impact it has on the community, both positive and some inconvenience to, to neighbors. I, I think the event is healthy where it's at, numbers-wise. Um, we manage parking, we, we have drone video to show where exactly where our parking is for people that are working that, to guide them in on race morning. Um, we, you know, we can't park on State Street anyways, and the, there's only other options would be the fields inside of the park, but-
Well, I was thinking that Assam Wops at school, cause it's on a, a Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh, the race is, um,
Sunday?
It was Sunday, yeah. Which, we don't, uh, I, I think we're, I think it, it works where we're at. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm not, uh, I think we're, we're, I feel confident with the logistics of race morning here, uh, where we're at, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, through you, um, there was an issue last year, and I don't know which event it was, so I'm not gonna point fingers specifically, um, but one of the events we held in town had gone off and marked their route in pretty bright paint all over the street, which makes sense. Um, but then left it there, and it was there for months and months and months, where some events organizers will come back and like spray paint over black just to make it kind of blend in and whatnot. Our streets just kinda like looked littered with random dig-safe type stuff all over the place.
So we use an approved marking chalk, not a paint, it's, uh, designed to wear on its own. Um, it's the only thing we'll put on the roads.
Yeah, I just bring it up, cause whoever did this last year, definitely wasn't chalk.
Sure. Nah, ours is a spray chalk, and I'm happy to provide the MSDS labels for what, what we use, for guys.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the application, um, for the Cranberry Tri-Fest, scheduled for Sunday, August twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Um, from the hours of seven-thirty AM to twelve-thirty PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? You mean none? Uh, roll, please.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candido, I.
Yeah, I-
Okay. Um, the next one that you had, um, mentioned, it would be the half, um, triathlon, which was scheduled, or proposed to be scheduled June fourteenth.
Correct.
Um, and I believe everything has been signed off here, DPW, Inspection Services, Police and Fire. Um, and the fourteenth is that a Sunday as well?
That's a Saturday.
That's a Saturday.
That one's hosted at a church, so Sundays are off limits, I know.
Right, and this is-
That one's a cycling pass-through, um, similar roads that are affected from Cranberry. Slightly different route, but, um.
And, um, I just need to make the point that, um, you know, it is simple file, you know, um, you do the best you can, you know, with the participants, so let them know that, you know, when it's two or three, you know, wide, it makes it very difficult for any passing, you know.
On that note, we do have USAT officials, uh, which are sanctioning and ensuring body that, um, monitors the course and penalizes these qualified athletes for riding if they're caught doing that. So, it's a definitely point of emphasis, I know, over the past couple of years, since I've taken this over, I went to point of emphasis for our, we, I, hopefully we've improved on it, um, and we do have, uh, between the lakes, we do have, um, one of our photography points, and that's one of the faster points of the course, I would say, and, um, pleasantly, uh, pleased with the footage and images that I see most of them, pretty single file, so. Uh, they are allowed to pass, uh, of course, but every, every morning of race morning, it's, um, the main focal point that I'm talking about, that, you know, these are open roads, and they're required for, you know, safety purposes to be checking for vehicles anyways, as they're making the passes, so.
And what is the time for this event?
Uh, Patriot Halfer coming through, um, athletes would start on the bike around nine, be finished, uh, roughly noon for that one.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application, um, for the publicway license for the Patriot Half Triathlon, scheduled for Saturday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, roughly between the hours of nine AM and twelve PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll, please.
Donahue, I.
Carbone, I.
Candido, I.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
I'll get you, uh, the information, um, send my personal information over to Tracy for the, um, citizens in town wants to discuss, cause I certainly don't wanna have that happen again. I wish I could have talked to them, uh, that day, um, at, you know, I don't want anyone to have a negative-
Sure.
Impact from this, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff, nice to see you.
You took, and we do send our cards again, um,
Okay.
So for both events, everybody, like, it's a long, effective route, we'll get those cards, so.
And Tracy, these are, um, these have been approved, so I wanna make sure that we get our communication piece up on our website as well. Um, to get that out to, to residents, um, a little bit-
A little early, yeah.
No, but a further outreach than, you know.
Sure, I can, uh, it usually was the week of, I can do it two weeks before, so. I'll coordinate with you.
All right, perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All righty. All right, are you here for something? All right. Um, so, uh, back to agenda item number eight. So, um, we had approved the direction to actually put together the, um, Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee, and had provided direction to our town administrator to put together a draft and bring it to us, uh, for the next meeting. And that's what we have in front of us. So I'll open it up for discussion, and Andrew, if you'd like to.
Yeah, so I, I took, um, quite a few different towns and communities, um, what their charges were. I kind of like Lakeville's, kind of passed charges on a few things. Um, I took a first crack at it, draft, definitely put emphasis on that. Um, I've gotten some feedback on the, the members I put on the committee. Um, that was just really to kind of spark the conversation. I wasn't really sure how, how big or small the committee should be. I know for certain I wanna put a Board of Health member on there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and maybe take a couple members off, but I wanted to see what Select Board said about that. And then the other big point that I wasn't quite sure on is when the Select Board would want, like, a report back from the Subcommittee. I put December thirty-first, twenty-sixth, which kind of puts us in line with the fire station a little bit, but I'm certainly open to changing that around.
Well, um, I mean, maybe that might be a, a good timeline for a final report, but I think updates, you know, along the way would be helpful. Um, because you might run into some roadblocks or some concerns that you might wanna bring in front of the Board to maybe help with direction, but-
Right, and obviously there's no funding for this, so any sort of appropriation would have to come to the Select Board.
From this Board.
Yeah, so.
Um, I know, looking at the, the makeups, you have, what, ten members here?
Yes.
And then adding the Board of Health, which I think is, is prudent, um, would be eleven. We do know that running large committees can be a little taxing, um. So, but again, it's up to the, to the Board if they wanna, um, reduce the numbers, or-
How many were in fire station?
Um.
Cause that worked pretty well.
Nine. Nine?
Another ten or eleven is not much different.
No. And we, um, you know, and believe it or not, we actually had a night that everybody was available. You know, two nights during the, the month, so. Um, but again, you know, you've got some staff members on here, and, you know, to meet in the evening, you know, that's the first thought that pops into my mind, that typically our meetings are in the evening. But with staff, um, you wanna make sure that, you know, we're conscientious of their time.
Yeah, and, and some of those are, some of the people we could take off, but they'd be obviously the first phone call of, once we get into this, what are we gonna do with the building? And like, someone like Paul Nee, I could see being on or off, but he'd be someone that we'd call and bring in.
Cause you did say here, um, that you would reach out, you had other, um,
Yeah.
Engage the advice and counsel professional advisors as needed.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Madam Chair, I'll jump in, too, if you're-
Sure.
Thinking. Um, I would reduce it down to nine if I, if, if that was, uh, the will of the Board, um, and I would do- Um, and I would do exactly, uh, that saying, uh, adding in the Board of Health. Um, and I would have the same concerns adding, um, members of the town because we would have to give them in kind and there would have to be some agreement there that we'd want to, you know, make sure we're not making our people work outside of their regular schedule, um.
I just tried to add as many kind of stakeholders as I could.
Cause it's kind of like a. I think it makes sense.
It's a building everyone kind of cares about, you know, so.
Yeah, and the, the other part of the charge, and it's not super applicable to this one, but I think it's applicable to any building project that we'll ever do in town is we, we should always have a not to exceed number, I think, on, on these type of projects. Um, not that we have anything to exceed from, because we have zero, um, but, uh, I always worry about projects that go in that say, let's build it exactly the way we want it without those guidelines of, you know, what does that price look like at its maximum point? Because I think that helps inform the project in general.
I agree, and, um, just with the, the current climate and then the, the capital products on the horizon, there's really not, we're, we're going to have to be pretty creative.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping there's some funds, you know, uh, you know, that, just like the ones we were talking about earlier, that there's some funds because I know there was some infrastructure funds, um, available, um, especially for dilapidated buildings, which this absolutely qualifies for.
Right. And there's, there's opportunity for, you know, a lot of, that's where the creative juices need to, you know, come into play, um.
I did have a question.
Grant writer would be.
Not sure if it's specifically called out. Let me just do it real quick. Are we looking to focus on only the portions of Town Hall that are going to be evacuated by fire when they go? Or is this a whole look?
I would do the, I, I personally, I, I thought it would be the whole look.
Okay. Cause like I would, I feel like to do ourselves a justice, it's got to be a whole look. And outcomes, we should not immediately rule out any particular outcome. So if the outcome is abandon this thing and start over because it's going to be too much put into it to make it functional, then fine. Just tell us that, set us up for that expectation. I wish the money, the two hundred K at Town Meeting passed a couple of years ago, so we could already kind of have that in front of us now, because now we're starting from scratch. I don't know where we have to, because we can't do a not to exceed until we actually have like something we're building towards and designing.
And what, and what, there, obviously there has to be, you know, some ideas generated as to what.
Funding sources, yeah.
Well, not even, not even that, but the idea of what the building would be. Because then that's, you know, you might, that's where you would might start to rule out, you know, some of the, um, the ideas, like, oh, we're going to put in a ballroom, you know, because that, you know, everybody wants a, a ballroom because they want an annual, you know, party.
The Lakeville Ball.
You know, well, Middleboro has a ballroom, okay, but.
And a ghost, so we don't have that either.
But I'm saying that that would be the soft, that would be the soft thought or creative, um, ideas that, you know, okay, so maybe that comes off the block. But I think that we really need to have that community outreach, um, you know, in looking at our needs as far as our town, if, you know, like it's the administrative needs, um, we need services and departments.
Um, additionally, if we added in any other space, we would have to do other things to the building.
Yeah, if we touch anything.
Yeah.
We'd exist in square footage.
We'd have to do the sprinklers and, and the, um.
Figure out any asbestos left.
Asbestos abatements.
Right, and all that, I think, is part of the feasibility study that was done from Secosia, um, Self-Tech. I think those might be included in that too, so I think, you know, this, this committee would have to take that into consideration and, because you're right, that you know, whatever the percentage is of the footprint of that building.
It's pretty much.
Then that would be a cost.
Hmm, definitely. There was a cost.
It used to be two hundred thousand and I'm sure it's about four hundred thousand, because we scoped it out in twenty nineteen, it was two hundred thousand, so it's probably double.
But when you're, you're putting, you know, as you're coming up with, um, I guess the use of, or potential uses of the building and associated costs, at the same time, we could look at, um, you know, oppor- funding opportunities that might be able to match. So there's a, there's a new sprinkler grant out there. I don't know that, but maybe there will be, that we could happen to. All right, let's go back to the, um, the makeup. Nine members? Gives us a, an odd.
I, I, I keep it odd, yeah. I mean, I don't mind the eleven, but if there's a concern, then drop it. Just who you're dropping.
The reason I chose ten, there was a reason for that, it was forced, um, collaboration. If it was five-five, someone had to. So I, I hate seeing a five-four vote personally.
Survivor.
So we could keep it at ten, but somebody would have to come up. Um, is there any, um, for the members at large, is there any criteria that you would look for, um, you know, with residents or residents that would just be interested?
I would love criteria to be, you know, someone that's worked on public building projects before or someone with extensive grant writing experience or funding source experience, which is pretty esoteric, but.
It's what they did on the old Colony project, like some of their residents are in the construction industry, have built schools.
Yep, yep. Just, you know, having an extra perspective instead of, whi- which is always great, feedback, but we would get the feedback we needed through surveys and out outreach, uh, whereas in, we could really professionalize it a little bit more with, um, some residents to support some skills that, you know, either we need some support on or some balancing opinions on.
And I also, um, I mean, maybe they did that through the, um, feasibility study. I, I don't recall off the top of my head. Um, but I know that the building is still owned by Taunton, if I'm not mistaken, right?
It does come up every now and then.
It does.
No, I think we.
Nope. Um, I checked with Reed Garbitt on that and she confirmed that it was purchased by the town. Um, with the caveat that if we ever sell the building, we have to sell it back to Taunton.
Okay, then that's what it was. Okay, I knew that there was something.
Do you remember the price?
I could find no record of this transaction or this vote anywhere, by the way, so like. And Taunton doesn't have it.
Yeah.
Taunton has no record of that vote or transaction.
Oh, so they think they own it?
No, no.
No, no, I just, I knew that there was something, that there was some connection there.
Yeah, I knew.
Cause I had reached, I had reached out back when Tom Hoy was mayor, um, and because we're trying to knock down that old, um, squirrel breeding place beside Town Hall.
The nation home?
No, no, it's a, it, it's just a structure. You might not even notice it anymore. I think it's been absorbed, grown. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's been absorbed. We were trying to knock it down, um, and we reached out and they're like, we don't even have records that, that we ever owned it. And I was like, nice. Checked off, but yeah. It's the cell.
All right, so, uh, two Select Board members, one FinCom member, um, three members at large with, um, some, you know, criteria. Um, town administrator, building commissioner, town clerk, and facilities, uh, manager now, and one Board of Health member. Again, not burdening our town officials, um, I guess we'll have to.
We can take those final two off.
The town clerk and facilities. I know you'd be tapping into them, you know, for input anyways.
Yeah, right.
Um, because you're going to be looking at, assuming space needs.
Yeah, town clerk has a big footprint with the basement and everything and.
They'll probably be the action part of.
Yeah.
Some of it.
Exactly.
Okay.
You want to be an annex.
Yeah. No more annexes, that's bad for, it's bad for flow.
All right, so that brings us down to nine.
Two, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine.
Okay. Do we need a vote?
Did you already double check the FinCom by law? I think it says they could be on building committees.
I think so, because I think Larry.
Larry's on the fire station.
Good, good. You're hardly limited.
Um, it, it's not by statute, it's because, uh, in, was it nineteen ninety-something? There was a school committee person that was going to be on both and they, and they did that.
This town doesn't like that.
No, so they, they made that bylaw specifically for that person.
Oh.
Yeah. I always enjoy role la- role making like, uh, super fair.
Okay, I would keep the deliverable, uh, December thirty-first, twenty-sixth. I mean, that's a, you know, it's out there, but I think that that's a, you know, a golden torch. Everything else seemed to be, um, I might want to think about who you would take on for your administrative support, uh, because that would be a consideration. I know that when we form these types of subcommittees, um, it, it's important that, you know, somebody has to manage the communications of the, and the minutes and the agendas and room location and so I want to think about, um, who that designated person might be.
Okay. Madam Chair, the question I would have is, are we just creating an unfunded mandate here? I mean, it's comprehensive analysis, criteria, conditions and such, but there's no funding that goes along with this.
Well, do we, I, I mean, I don't know.
But we can't leave it as is, an empty building.
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
But.
But we have to do something.
To get the information they need to make the correct report.
So obviously we, this board couldn't appropriate right now. It would have to be obviously Town Meeting. If you're, if you're interested, we could put something on the annual.
Like what?
I would say it wouldn't be a whole lot of money. Wouldn't recommend that.
But are we saying, like, a feasibility, Brian, or are you?
Well, I mean, the, it depends on what level of depth we're looking for. I mean, if they do have to, I don't know, go in and figure out structurally if it's okay and what, you know, areas and what kind of, you know, loads the building can handle. I don't know that anybody can do that for free. Um, I don't know, I don't know if there's anything that they can tap into from contractual services that are in the budget. But like, I'm just afraid we're going to get a list of great ideas with nothing to back it up.
Right, and, but that's where, you know, where do you start? You know, do you get the ideas and then say, okay, this is, you know, what we would like to see happen here? And then find out if it is a viable.
I mean, it's, we're talking twenty-two months to come back with maybe nothing that's actionable? And then do we start talking about funding to do a real feasibility study? I don't, I'm not, I don't have the answers, but like this timeline seems really long.
No, I see what you mean. I see what you mean. Um, I guess that would be maybe final.
What would that date be represented about? The last date, would it be to have it ready for a warrant?
I don't know. That's, that's, I think, the part we're still missing, what it is. What is the final report going to consist of? Have they been empowered with the right resources to get it done?
Question for the group, and I know I asked it about the fire station, so I'll ask it again about the Town Hall. Was there a full charge on what they were looking for? Did they, when they scoped it out, what they were doing? Like, I, I've never seen any document that said what their goal, how they came upon, you know, coming up with the solution that they did. What, you know, what were their criteria? Nothing.
I haven't seen it.
I've never seen.
I didn't either. So, all right, why don't we approach it this way? If we form this, um, and then we get the dialogue going with the report coming back to us in July of this year and that way, we can talk a little bit more about what we, or before then, what we are looking because, obviously, um, you know, we have septic to consider.
Um, but that septic we'll have to consider anyways.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that's part of the equation. Um, you know, there is, you know, I, I do know that we were approached, um, with consideration, um, Lake Camp was looking for a spot. So that would be something to consider. Um, and why am I forgetting who else came? Um.
I mean, if, even if we had, like, some kind of, um, initial visionary statement or have the scope narrowed down to some degree that, like, in the summer, I think it at least helps us to say we're headed in the right direction. Something that could show incremental progress versus just come back in twenty-two months.
I think you're, I think you're on it.
Have it wrapped.
Yeah.
All right, so let's put, um, um, July. By July thirty-first. Maybe then you'll have your, have, you'll hold your first meeting after you.
Yeah. Maybe that's just the, the starting point, like, what is the vision?
Yeah.
And then the vision, obviously, informed, we'll try to work with the people of Lakeville, try to come up with some ideas of, from their point on what they'd like to see there. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, what we can get funded, would get done.
So why don't we, um, why don't we do this, um, Select Board members, um, submit thoughts, their personal thoughts to, um, the Town Administrator of ideas that they would like to encompass. And then we can bring that back to a meeting.
See what resonates.
Yeah. Again, it's, you know, this board might have, you know, some ideas and then maybe the, the next board might have.
Were we going to vote tonight, Madam Chair, on who the members are or we're still going to?
We should be voting on that, yes. Yep, so this would be the charge.
I would volunteer if, uh, okay, anyone's interested as, as one of the members.
All right, do I hear a motion, um, to appoint Maureen Candido as one of the Select Board Representatives to the Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candido, aye.
Aye.
And second member? Do we want to wait until?
I was going to nominate Brian.
I don't have the capacity right now.
You're, you're over it.
Anyone else?
I'm gone in April, but I can start that. Or I can transition to a member at large. Otherwise, we can just wait for Leah.
Well, we can wait until April. I think we did that with the fire station building committee.
All right, we did.
I think we appointed one member and then we waited and then.
You're absolutely right.
All right, well, I'll just move forward with a bunch of stuff then. Hope no one catches up until, uh, until, so I'll have some actual stuff going, so I don't want to wait.
Okay. All right. So now, um, we need a, a motion on the charge. Um, the only thing I would just, just in the, the title, I would just remove this, the bill, second word of building before Subcommittee. So it just reads the Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Um, we'll go with nine members, two Select Board, one FinCom, three members at large with criteria, um, Town Administrator, Building Commissioner, and one Board of Health. And we just appointed Maureen to that. Um, we're a deliverable, uh, uh, report back the end of July.
Yeah.
Um, twenty-fifth to, um, present initial vision. Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the charge as outlined, um, for the Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll please.
Donahue, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Candido, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, agenda item number nine. Did you already turn your little things? So good. Uh, so this is our second reading, uh, of the purchase, purchasing card policy and procurement policy um, presented by our town administrator at our last meeting. Um, did anybody have anything that they wanted to bring up since the last meeting?
I did just want to ask, what, were there any changes since the first copy?
No changes.
Thank you.
Um, I have brought up the last reading, uh. Um, I have brought up the last reading uh about cash handling and procurement for the parks and for the uh AM control officer. I didn't know, and we were talking about, do we want to have two cards or one card?
I was thinking one card townwide. Um, it would include the parks, since all their purchases go through the town technically. Um, and then the last one, cash handling, um, that'll be a separate policy. That'll that'll come back.
Um, the one card will be held in your office?
Uh, town treasure collector.
Treasure. Oh, treasure collector, yeah.
In a uh safe.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and these policies would go into effect as of the vote?
I was thinking July first, just to kind of do the training. I plan on doing a lot of legwork until July first, kind of want to just drop it on people and then kind of cause chaos in the finance world. Because they got to change overnight and just like, what are we doing?
But they're used to that. They thrive on it.
Yeah, right.
All right, I just want to make sure that we still um at the bottom, we put um, you know, what the policy is in the the footing and then the date there.
Yep.
So I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the Town of Lakeville Purchase Card Policy and Usage Agreement um with an implementation date of July first twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second, and Donahue, I.
Okay. With motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, signified by saying aye. We have an aye. Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
Do I?
Okay, so the uh approved date would be this evening and then the effective date or implementation date would be July first.
And I've kind of done this last few years in different places, but I'll bring her back early.
Okay.
For a second look, because all those things changing and moving, so.
How are you keeping track of them?
Of what? The changes?
Yeah, how like are you? Do you have a master policy list that you've attached all the copies of the policy for with a, you know, like a little timestamp or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Always good.
It's good. Um, because they're always they're fluid.
Well, you gotta look at everything all the time, otherwise you have something where you're not allowed to have turkeys in May or something ridiculous.
Um, as far as the procurement policy and procedures, this would go into effect immediately?
July first.
July first as well.
Yeah, a lot of it mirrors the law anyway, so.
Okay. Right, so I will um entertain a motion to adopt the um presented procurement policies and procedures um and guide for department boards and committees approved this evening with a an effective start date of July first twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Uh, discussion?
Are you gonna second?
Second for discussion?
Yes.
Um, there was one line that I asked about last time, and I didn't write if I resolved the issue, and that was the fifty thousand was inclusive of everything and not like fifty thousand and then another fifty thousand and then another fifty thousand. I can't remember what line that was.
Oh.
Yeah.
I haven't got my other copy. It would be per purchase, so if it was like a one year twenty, if it was a three year contract and it was twenty thousand, that would definitely have to be.
Yeah, it would have to be per purchase completely and not as a, you know, ongoing.
Yeah, right.
Fifty thousand a year or, you know, fifty thousand every time it comes up for something. That was my only call out. Um, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table um to approve the procurement policies and procedures with a an effective start date of July first.
I, Donahue.
Oh, okay. Carboni, I.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just saying that this is where we were um in the process when we came back in. So we just had discussion. Um, so roll.
Donahue, I.
Carboni, I.
Um, just wanted to make sure the language containing it for one year is part of the motion.
So moved.
Total contract cost, right?
Total contract.
Yeah.
Candido, I.
Included in the.
Yeah.
I'm gonna need some guidance on that language because that was really confusing.
Um, so the the value of the total contract will not exceed fifty thousand.
Okay.
Wherever he wants to put it.
Yeah, just make it happen. Make it happen.
That comes up all the time.
Okay, excellent. Okay. All right, number ten. We haven't had one of these in a while. Um, we have a a comment um due to the planning board regarding a site plan review of nineteen Main Street. Um, there usually they tell us when their next meeting is. It's a public hearing, it looks like Thursday, February twenty seventh. Um, so this, you know, I know that they try to align the comments with the departments and you know, what they're they're hearing, so. Okay. So this is where that, if I'm not mistaken, with the White House is, right across from Walgreens and Bridge Street.
Oh, near the hospital property.
Yes.
White House, the.
The old administrative building.
Yes.
Administrative building, okay.
So it would be, I think there's a road next to the um funeral. And I think it's just to the left of that. So I don't know if it encompasses the White House or not, but I think it's like right in that vicinity.
I was way off.
I think I think.
Because if you look at this, if you look at the one of the maps, um, which was a little bit clearer, doesn't have a page number on it. Um, but I wanted to see in relation to Bridge Street. It's this map here, I don't know. It just made it a little bit more clear. So it's almost directly across from Bridge Street. And I know that, you know, we're responsible for, you know, water and earth removal and um but for me, right now, I know that there's been traffic studies done on one oh five. I don't know, I haven't seen the latest one. But this is now another opening.
Yep.
So we just went through the um with the hospital property, their their opening going into the Fox.
Well, I don't know if it counts or not, but there's are there's already an opening there, the curb cut in the street that's there. I think they're just gonna turn it back on.
Well, it has to line, the lines don't line up if we ever wanted to get a light.
I mean, the property compassed that whole road. It's a horrible intersection. Unfortunately, that plot should have never been carved out for auction when the hospital was getting ditty ducked because that should have been the entrance to the big project.
What if we did a small roundabout?
Um, I like my life. I don't want to get shot by residency.
No, I was in Ireland last September and they don't have stuff like we, it's all little roundabouts, tiny roundabouts, bigger roundabouts.
The only place I would ever suggest a roundabout, and I will take absolute gunfire for this because I will I will get lots of lots of uh messages is eighteen and uh one oh five.
Mm-hmm.
That is the accurate, that would be a perfect place for a roundabout, just like the one they have in Free Town.
You know, we can move all of the flower things like one in each.
Well, let's on this one here, though. I see what you're saying too, it reduces, but that's one, that's.
You don't need to move a street to put a light in this.
But right now, that street that you're talking about is not used.
Correct.
So with what they're proposing putting in here is retail and some other um auxiliary buildings and office space in the back. So there's traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So can the the Madam Chair, um, can the planning board condition it so they would have to have a central entrance point for both projects?
I think that they'll probably, that is there under their purview. Um, I was just pointing it out for for myself. Um, but that's a comment that we can send back to the planning board that we're very concerned with the egress to the property.
Yeah, just think of all that traffic, if you're having two sets so close together.
Mm-hmm.
I can see that being potentially very dangerous.
I think this is a nice project. Um, I think it utilizes that, you know, space nicely. Um.
I I had a problem with the project itself, other than I hope they can actually fill the retail, and we just don't have more empty spots in town. The the contractor base will get filled, everybody wants those right now.
Yeah.
They'll make their money there.
Hopefully, they're building to suit, not to spec.
Hmm, it's mostly spec.
But I I mean, it's nice just to start to see some, you know, some develop happy.
Yeah, but that would that would be my only comment, is my concern of the um
Yep.
The egress and trying to find a way to partner with the adjoining parcel to create one egress.
This does get a little weird because this, I don't know if that parcel has has existed all the time or if that was newly created when they started auctioning off part of the hospital.
Newly created. It was one big slab prior to that.
So it was probably it was probably under the old water allocation, so there probably is none now for nineteen Main Street if it's a new property.
Well, we'll have to wait until that comes up in front of us, but you're right, that's um, that was whole, that original was for the whole.
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Okay.
Because it didn't get split up until the auction.
Yeah.
Yeah, the J.J. Manning.
So one oh five is Mastioti, correct?
Correct. So no, no curb that.
So we need to um just alert Mastioti, I guess, because this board has always had concerns about the amount of traffic on one oh five, and now that we're adding additional. I mean, I just, I don't want to see a Route Six
Oh, yeah.
in Lakeville on one oh five.
I don't think it's that bad, but I do think it is cause for concern.
Listen, I'm telling you, tell them to put a roundabout here.
She's already drawn it.
I'm not even kidding. Perfectly, I'm not kidding. Tell them to recommend a roundabout, draw it up, see what it looks like. It will work. Like, I'm not being kooky and crazy, it'll work. So I like, I hear you, we don't want that. But it's never gonna slow down because that place is where everybody likes to pass on the right, and that's where so many of the accidents come from. Because someone tries to be nice and say, oh, you can pull out, which they're not supposed to do because that's not how you drive and they're supposed to go in. But that's where the accidents come from. If you do a roundabout, it doesn't matter if it doesn't match up perfectly because it'll just flow into it. So that's my recommendation.
They will get it done in like twenty thirty seven.
Because that's that's the Mastiotis.
Yes.
Well, you know what? The planning board is meeting on February twenty seventh, it's a Thursday. Maybe you can send, we can include in a comment that um we have concerns about um one oh five. Select board member had suggested a roundabout as an option. I I just, I'm putting it out there.
We do have that. I'll say at the end, the bond bill, million dollars to, I guess, could study, design it.
Well, we have the light that we're trying to deal with, which.
Bridge Street light, forever.
Yeah, but I mean, that would take care of.
So instead of a million dollars on a light, you just put some cement down and put some flowers.
But the light cost is.
Two hundred fifty thousand for the.
The town.
Yes.
Cost because um, but I don't know at what point does Mastioti take on the responsibility of road safety?
Thank you.
Road safety.
Yeah, I think they they take on everything after designing
Yep.
right away and everything else.
Okay.
It's just always weird that they have design on the towns. I've just.
Yeah.
Any other comments to the planning board?
No, that's my only one.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Tracy's smiling over there like this board is just crazy. Okay. Um. We are now on thirteen.
I'm on the planning.
What's your take on it all?
Good luck. Because twenty eight and one oh five is a functioning F intersection and Mastioti does nothing for that, so.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Okay, agenda item number thirteen. Um, we, in front of us have a resignation um from Brittany Lepore, who um was appointed as the Parks Commission Representative to our Community Preservation Committee. So because we do the appointments, we need to accept the resignation um of Brittany. So I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the letter of resignation from Brittany Lepore um from the Community Preservation Committee. And it looks like immediately, effective immediately. So effective immediately.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll.
Donahue, I.
Carboni, I.
Candido, I.
And, you know, if we can just say thank you to Brittany, I know um, I believe at the last Parks Commission meeting, they'll, when they become, you know, after the election, when they have a full complement, hopefully, um, they'll be able to appoint or send a recommendation to the select board for appointment. So, so thank you, Brittany. Um. Okay, um, I agenda item number fourteen. So I'd like to invite, um, I knew you were here, Miss Lacey Marshall, our HR Director of. Nice to see you, Lacey.
Nice to see you all.
So we um are bringing the classification and compensation study um that was conducted um and the final report provided January twenty twenty four. So this board had um wanted to, because we were going through a change with town administration and we wanted to bring this up at a future date. Well, today is our future date. So uh this has been disseminated out to the board um at least a couple of weeks ago uh for review. It's a pretty hefty document. Uh, some of us did receive it back in January twenty four. So you came in April.
April.
Okay.
Yeah, the board received it, May sixth twenty twenty four was the first look.
Okay.
So everybody's had it for a little while.
Okay. I'm not quite sure what we do with this at this point. So um, I mean, it does. I mean, it was quite the read twice.
I mean, I I would like to ask the HR Director and the Town Administrator, like, what's their, what's their takeaway from here? We're the top five things they think we should implement. Not maybe not necessarily like, you know, salary numbers, but what, how can we, what do we learn from this that we can improve our organization with?
That's a good question.
Thank you, Brian. That was very well said.
Yeah.
So I think the biggest one that I liked about this is to create an actual pay scale. Right now, especially with department heads, if one person leaves, we're guaranteeing the next person that we're hiring into that rate.
So we're we're not, I'm sorry to interrupt, that was just a policy that the previous town administrator had took upon himself to enact. That was not a policy prior to him and there was no.
If you follow your class and comp pay scale, it's a number, not range.
Yes.
So you are hiring into that pay.
Board voted on it.
When?
May of twenty two or three.
Bastards.
Give me the facts.
So I'd like to see a pay scale
Okay.
to stop that from happening um in the way that they have it grouped is depending on your experience and your education and your longevity is what groups you into those different scales. So even though you're a department head, some department heads require um you know, more training or education, so they go into like a higher group than other ones and then supervisors are in another group. So the class and comp did break it down. I'm not saying we have to use exactly what they said, but I did like how they they gave that group. Um, that was a good piece of it. The so the things I didn't like, I came here kind of with three options for the select board. One was to accept it and work with it, potentially create a pay scale. Um, really look at job descriptions so that we're fitting the right jobs into the right pay scales and making sure that there's uniform. And making sure that there's uniformity because some of the positions that we have, I can't either find a job description for them. Or it's so outdated that it doesn't even pertain to them anymore. Um, second option is to say that it's incomplete and then bring the union in and redo the whole study. So what I didn't like about it is because it doesn't involve the union, positions that are non-union. Uh, in our, in a different pay scale than our union, they're not crossing together. So. If everybody was grouped together, we'd see a full picture where right now we're seeing kind of half of a picture, if that makes sense.
No, actually, could you explain that one more time? Are you saying that you want to see two scales so you can?
So what I'm saying is, I'll, I'll give you the example. So right now, if you have a police officer and their starting pay is twenty seven dollars. This class and comp study for non-union is showing that a conservation agent should be paid thirty four dollars. Why? So I didn't incorporate all of the positions to say, hey, where should, where should this police officer be? Should they be in the same group or should this conservation agent come down? Are they really truly where they are? That's what I'm looking at where if you have a executive assistant that's non-union. And an executive assistant that's union, why is their pay discrepancy so large? Do we need to change a job description? Do we need to change their, their pay? So it's not really across the board looking like people are fitting into the right puzzle pieces right now. And can, so then that becomes the change of, are, do we look at, okay, based off of when people are leaving? We're going into a lower position or are we raising people up into that position that they should be in, if that makes sense?
So the takeaway would be synthesized to what statement? We had pay scale for the first one.
An incomplete, we would consider this class and comp study to be incomplete. Because we didn't group in everybody together to look at the whole picture. So the union wasn't involved. So to me, I feel like it's an incomplete puzzle because we only looked at less than half of our population. Uh, and then the third option really is just to reject it as a whole and say, we're just not accepting it as it is. Um. I don't love that one. I think if we kind of work with the incomplete one. Which gives time for us to do updated job descriptions to make sure that people are fitting into that right category. Um. And then also potentially, instead of paying for it this time, to get like a community compact grant to have them pay for it.
That's how towns typically pay for them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not bitter over that or anything.
And in the interim, just having like a pay scale for just the, even department heads to kind of give us that. Left, right limits of what we're looking at for their pay until we have this complete.
I could definitely see the, the pay scale range. I get that.
Would you recommend implementing that for this coming fiscal year or just ASAP?
I would. I designed one probably six months ago. Uh, and I had sent it to the board just to kind of look at the way that I was viewing it.
Um. Clarifying question, you had removed, you removed the high town from that one, right? Had you?
I, all I had done was I had taken their class and comp study and used, so instead of it saying H R Director is in grade K. It said H R Director is in grade nine and in grade nine was also like, I think the C O A Director and the Library Director. So, and then there was a range. So the starting pay could be, I don't know what it was, but say it's sixty thousand. It could go all the way up to a hundred thousand because based off of those three people and their experience, they always, they all fit into that grade. Whereas like somebody, you know, the, the Police and Fire Chief would be at that highest grade of like eleven. Because they have to have all that experience and all that supervisory and all that knowledge. So their pay scale would be whatever it was, you know, one thirty one to one seventy something. Um, so that was all it's doing. It's grouping the people in instead of being individualized.
Does the board have an appetite?
Yes.
Where, where are we gonna go on it? Incomplete?
I mean, I, I would like to see them at least pull out what they think is immediate benefit, start there. And then there's, there's other stuff to figure out here. I mean, I do think it should have covered everybody.
Yeah.
It started out as one list and other people get added and a couple of other specifics got added. It was really a strange process.
It was strange because we have, we have about sixty positions and only twenty nine of them. Really made it on to the class and comp study. And then I had to reach back out to Gov H R and say, hey, non-union, you're missing another like fifteen positions. Why weren't they also considered? Uh, so then they were rushing to go back to complete the study. So that in itself tells me that not everybody's really included in that one.
Again, same question. Do you, do you have the original charge or scope for, for that project?
I do. I looked at that. So the board approved the scope of work in. April of twenty twenty three. Um. And it wasn't a very large one, but that's what I believe the R F P was built off of. And then they hired. Gov H R, which is, they have a different name now, but they were hired fourteen June. They were contracted to do this.
Um. My concern that it wasn't done and it, and I thought this was the way it was going to be done and that this just might have been my understanding. That they were going to do everything you said about the scales. Everything was going to be scaled out, structured wise. But they were also going to make recommendations where they thought we didn't have enough support or we were over supported. I thought that was part of the.
I didn't see that. And when I spoke with Gov H R, they were focused on the pay scales and they were focused on position title changes.
Cause I did see, you know, the clerical and office assistant.
Yes.
You know, that was a recommended, recommendation.
And that's why I thought it would have been more expansive than throwing.
Right.
One random recommendation in one weird area. Um, it just didn't flow with the rest unless that was the, the charge. To make recommendations on staffing levels.
I think that the, you know, creating a, a pay scale range, um, I think. Is realistic. I think it's achievable. Um, I don't know what kind of pressure that's gonna put on. Your office, but um. And if we were to support going back out to include encompass, encompassing. Big picture. Um, I think, I just think that we'd probably have a different result.
Well, we have to also make sure we're.
Results, I guess.
I think we also have to agree on what the comps are. I mean, having like a town like, was it Rentham? Um, in our comps kind of throws everything off. Um, their budget's like fifty two million. Uh, yeah.
It's a little more industrial.
Yeah, like just completely not the same town. Um.
All right, well, do you want to make a motion, Brian?
That's a job. She doesn't need a motion.
Do we want to like direct towards the community compact or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, my thought is like, community compact to go out and figure out like a re-scope and if we're doing this, but beyond that, I mean, I think. You know, I would support these two to make any other changes they see fit.
Right, but I'm talking about. The vote to receive, to accept. Do we even have to?
Like, is that a thing?
Okay, there's no vote on it anyway. So can you carry on?
Tell us what we should be doing.
Great. Thank you very much, Lacey.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, um. So, subcommittee updates. Uh, select board policy subcommittee, anything?
Uh, Leah has not shared any of those documents. As of yet that she was working on.
Okay. Um, and then you had presented us with two.
But those were not select board policies.
Right.
Though, those were not existing policies, which was the charge of the select board policy. Um, and I forgot to put them on Word documents so you could edit them. So I will send them in Word. Cause they are just in text format as I do not pay for Microsoft on my home computer.
I would like to bring those back.
You do want these?
Yeah.
I would like to bring those two back for discussion on March ten.
I will send them out for discussions.
Um, I have no updates on the fire station building committee at this time. Um, we are meeting on March fifth. But they're still in the process of putting together their um, pre, I always miss this, that pre-construction.
Pre qualification.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Old Colony, Brian?
Uh, no updates. The meeting that was supposed to be the seventeenth last week got pushed to the nineteenth, so I was not able to attend. I'm at a different commitment. So I gotta catch up and see what they discussed that evening.
All right. Um, your I T?
Uh, tentatively going to meet on, that would be the second Tuesday, March eleventh. Um, we're kind of trying to do the second Tuesday of the month if necessary. So there's been no specific updates since then, but one thing we need to get figured out is when to bring in um. The folks for the cybersecurity review of the select board.
Yeah. Right.
So, because they want to come and give us a presentation.
Okay.
Member Chair?
Yes.
Um, can I ask, um, Member Day, um, what do you want to do about minutes? Do you want one of the remote secretaries to be assigned to you?
Um, so I was gonna do the minutes for the first one. Um. The remote ones, Lakeham was not able to cover us the last time. Um, so. Um, yeah, remote would be tough when there's no remote, but I mean, I can even record the meeting and.
I vote we buy civic minutes.
I don't know what that is.
Civic minutes. There's a A I software.
Oh.
For, for minute taking specifically for.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
You'll take care of it.
I'm happy to handle them for now. And then if we figure something else better, we can pivot.
Civic minutes.
All right. And our communication and committee, uh, community outreach subcommittee.
So I gave everybody a flyer. This is an example of what I was speaking about earlier this year. Lorraine already mentioned, um, it should be annual town meeting, not spring town meeting. Um, that's a fix. And then it can also be special town meeting if someone has opted in and they want to receive them for the fall town meetings as well. Um, not necessarily the final design, but basically the gist of it. Depending on the amount of articles, there would be a one-line summary that goes with it. Um, another thought I had was that on the left, you could do the financial stuff for the annual town warrant. And then on the right, you could start with the warrant articles. If there's more, they can continue to the back. Um, it has the time, the location. Uh, it says if you do not wish to receive notices, you can opt out, but I think it would be better for them to opt in. Like if they receive one a year or um, you know, one every other year for people who move here and don't know about it. And they can do that through email, calling or texting. And then they'd be basically put on a list that says they want to receive the mailings.
And you, and you had mentioned, you talked to um, Mr. McNally about, yeah.
About that. Um, because it would be basically opting into a database for receiving a mailing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, feedback, comments, concerns.
No, I think this is great. This is um, you know, another opportunity to get information out uh, to the community. About their um, town meeting, their, their body of. Cause it's up to the town meeting to decide. What the town's run.
Would we also add these and put these um, in places of interest? Um, like Aldi's and at Clark Shores and all that, like just to make it a more friendly look. In addition to the, to the full warrant, um, you know, just earlier. Not by statute, just to get more people involved at people that are, you know, not necessarily waiting on email for it.
That was kind of my question, like where would we, where would we physically put these? Cause we have the official warrant posting locations and so we probably like.
No, but you could put this earlier is like, you know, for interest, um.
This is what would be mailed out. This would be mailed out to everybody in Lakeville. And then if people liked it and wanted to continue receiving the mailing, they could opt in.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That way you're doing the, the whole town once.
Mm-hmm.
And then after that, you're only doing the people who found it beneficial.
Gotcha.
Um, because other things that you could include on it is ride sharing services. Like if people are offering rides, you could have a database of people who are willing to drive people to the town meeting. But then also if you develop like daycare or babysitting at the town meeting for the town meeting, people who want volunteer hours or whatever, you could also include that. You know, we do have ride share services and they will be available. But this is what would be mailed. And then if they wanted to keep getting it, they'd opt in.
And logistically, who would actually be putting this together, the mailing together?
Um.
Did you have a thought on that?
I mean, I'll volunteer to do it if I live here, if you email me the stuff. But other than that, like the assistant, not gonna throw more on your plate. Um.
Would we be able to put it in with the C O A letter or, you know, or any of the mailings? Cause I know it's a cost, but to do it in any of the, the mailings that we get done.
Hmm.
Um, I forgot how much it is, like ten cents for an extra page or.
Yeah, you have to align the timing on it somehow.
Yeah, yeah.
Member Chair two, putting in with tax bills only gets it to taxpayers. It doesn't get it to residents.
Hmm.
Who rent apartments.
Yeah.
So.
The um, the other thing I think we need to consider is like also like depending who gets this, you know, the. Opt in, opt out, either way is fine. But like, you know, the options are call, text, which we'd have to set that up. Um, email and like now the bottom, the only option is go to the website to see the full warrant, right? If you drop these off at the C O A, they're gonna say, okay, Lori, can you do that for me? Um, so there needs to be a way that's a little more inclusive. And at that point, I'm almost like, just mail the warrant out.
Right, well.
This is so like easily digestible.
It is. It absolutely is. But I remember growing up in, in Rainham, like we got the warrant like sent to the house. And it was like, okay, here it is. Like everything edited.
And then the state does those. Does that? They mail it to every resident.
And the state does those little, the, the red books or something that show up every now and then. There's things. I don't know what that costs. I'm just throwing out.
I'm not against mailing the whole warrant. I just want you to know that. It's just this seems the easier route to go. Send everybody.
Yeah, but this is more, people are gonna resonate with this style rather than reading something in legalese.
It matches the attention span.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's like a um.
It's gonna be like, if not.
Summary for, it's a warrant summary.
We can explore what it would cost.
One moment, please.
You can always put that printed copies are available at the town hall or the C O A. So that you're not just printing all of them and mailing them all out, but if they do want to see the full one in print. They can go to these specific places to pick it up.
Yeah, and then the C O A, if I'm not remembering this wrong, we bought them a printer and they do all their own printing for their newsletter. So having this quite literally in their newsletter.
Easy to do.
In this format, that's probably an easy score. Um, and it gets people to opt in without having to, you know, chase them. Um, I, I find our, uh, our older voters are, are the ones that always seem to find all the most information. Um, you know, and they're usually the, the most informed about each subject.
But if it's, that's just coming out of the senior. And somebody opts in for the mailing. And it's Lacey Marshall on, you know, A B C Street. And she's not a senior. How do we?
I'm just saying multi-pronged.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I do like the idea of sending it out with a tax bill at least once.
With the time and work. I don't know.
Maybe the excise taxes would work better.
I just got some online the other day, so it might be too late.
Too late on the excise, yeah. I'm just trying to.
What else would be sending out to people? Dog licenses.
Yeah, but that's usually.
Better when out in December.
Member Chair, can we access the school? The schools? To send it home to the Lakeville students, or even ask them?
How about, how about just sending it in their superintendent? The six-page summary that comes out on Sundays? Sixteen-page summary.
There's something, there's something about disseminating information through the superintendent's office. Um, I can't recall, I can't put my finger right on the policy.
Well, you know what? What we could do is put, like, take the warrant out, just pretend you can put the, the great big red lettering that says example. You could just send this out with the tax bills and say, we want to send this out to people who are interested. If you're interested, opt in, and before town meeting, you'll receive a mailing. So, we wouldn't be sending the mailing, we wouldn't be sending an actual legitimate mailing to everybody. We'd send the, if you want this, you opt in, and then if they opt in, we'll send them the mailing. Does that make sense? Cause that way you don't have to line up your times. You just, you try to get them when you can, and if they want it, then they'd get it when the time is right.
Another option, which is exactly what we're saying, but it's through different means, is what Lori, the COA, just did with the town clerk when the census went out. A little thing in there that said, hey, if you're a senior in need of, you know, food, you can drop it in there. Like you said, you know, and then to somebody's point, right, then it's not just going to taxpayers, it's going to residents, everybody. Um, and you might get your, your first net cash.
Yeah, I mean, is this something that, I mean, Andrew, I know you have so much going on right now. But there has to be some conduit for, um, to have this come to fruition, and I'm not quite sure where it would fall.
I think it's gonna be a multi-pronged initial effort to get it out, once people opt in and all.
Cause there's some things that have to be set up, obviously the email, you know, and the telephone number, if it, if it's gonna be the town administrator's office or, you know, Select Board's office.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Let me, um, let me work, let me work it a bit, uh, adjust it accordingly. Because now I'm gonna try to see about two different versions, the initial one of if you're interested, opt in, and then what it might actually look like, um, and then we can get back on that.
I think the, Brenda, I think the one that went out for the COA and the census was like, you know, just one of the short, one third eye.
It was like this. It was like a half, yeah, a half.
Okay.
So I see what, what you mean. Okay.
This is good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Citizens Academy Subcommittee, we were, um, supposed to attend a virtual, um, meeting by MMA, but that's been put off, so, um, we'd like to sit and go through that, I just don't know when. Um, but I think, I know Maureen's collecting information, I'm collecting information that we can bring together for the meeting. Um, so we can get this, get a timeline together and present it back to the Select Board for, you know, for approval. Uh, you didn't hear what if MMA was rescheduling a different date, right?
I haven't seen anything yet.
Alright. Okay.
Right, may I, this is the last one, right?
Yes.
May I provide a water boy update, since I'm a delegate? Even though we didn't.
Well, that's, yes, we haven't added that on there, but yes, you are a delegate. What, what do you have, Brian?
Um, so, I'm gonna try to summarize the best I can, but, you know, going back a number of years now, we've had many different residents in La Baron Hills come to the Select Board, different members, different times, different concerns. Um, over the water infrastructure that's there, who owns it? Who's doing the water quality testing? Who's flushing the hydrants? How do we get off the master meter, which is this whole other, would take us ninety minutes to go through that discussion? So, um, what's happened is over these years, and it's come to a head more frequently lately, was that's now causing discussions between other town officials, City of Taunton, uh, the developer of La Baron Hills, all these residents, Mass DEP, and everybody's like trying to work together and figure things out, but there's been a couple of things that have, for the first time that I'm aware of, come up where it's like, this feels like it needs a little more exploration, so, um, I prepared a letter, I'm happy to read it, or if you wanna read yourselves, to consider sending to the ZBA, which in short, says that there was a letter from DEP we learned about recently, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, that essentially says, in summary, DEP says La Baron Hills is a consecutive water supply. So then, responsibility is no longer, like, at that master meter, it's no longer continuous water, it's somebody. Is it the HOAs? Is this still the developers, since it's not complete yet? And there's a whole bunch of requirements for flushing and testing and whatnot. Um, so basically, DEP, at one point in here says, I apologize, cause I had it here somewhere. Uh, "It is important not to expand the La Baron Hills water system until it's been brought into full compliance with the applicable regulations." And I don't know, given this was basically two years ago.
Yeah.
What has changed, what the current status is. Um, so that feels like something we should ask ZBA to consider figuring out, just since they have other hearings going on right now. The other thing that's been brought to our attention is there seems to be, and nobody understands why, there seems to be no ASBILs available, or nobody's owning up to it for the water infrastructure, which makes no sense at all. Um, and it appears that the comprehensive permits did say that all ASBILs have to be furnished as part of the permit. Um, so that's just the second thing that I included to say, let's figure it out, where are they so that, you know, we can be educated the next time a resident comes to us, and then if we have to advocate on behalf, because there's, some of these conversations are coming back to, well, we don't know what's in the ground. So we won't, we don't wanna take the risk on of what's in the ground that we don't know about, and it's like, there has, these have to exist. And in my mind, if it was part of the permitting process, then we're just saying, you know, let's make sure your compliance is what you signed up to do, that's all. Um, and then maybe that, maybe that opens doors and leads us somewhere else, but those were just two things that seemed worthy of asking ZBA to look into.
You have my buy-in, I know.
Same.
So, um, did I cover everything?
Yeah, I mean, uh, there's gonna be a hearing on, I think, Thursday night.
Yes.
It might get continued, but we can still send the letter in for a future date.
Thursday for ZBA?
Yes, this week, twenty-seventh.
For the hearing is for what?
Well, in phase six.
Yep, in phase six.
So yes, that would be prudent to get, even if it isn't continued, at least.
At least so they're aware.
Yeah.
Right, so they got more information. Um, the letter does say at the end, in case you haven't had a chance to read it, um, you know, first to DEP, item, second was the ASBILs, and third just says, uh, "Please take the above into consideration for any pending hearings related to La Baron Hills. The Select Board respectfully suggests no further approvals until the elements have been proven to be satisfied."
Worse for me.
I don't know if we need a motion and a vote or not, or we just wanna throw this on the letterhead and send it up or across.
Yeah.
That's all.
Let's do it.
Alright.
We're gonna get some kind of, um, I hate to say structure, but there's no structure here for that.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
Complicated issue.
It's very, very, too many moving parts.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good job, water boy.
Yes, I was just asking of the day, could you just email without that, so I didn't have to worry?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll send you the DEP one as well, so you've got both of them, and I think I caught a typo.
If we can include that DEP one with the, the letter to the ZBA.
Will do. Alright, thank you, everybody. That's all.
Alright, and, uh, any new business? Okay, old business, um, we have an update on the American Recovery Plan Act, uh, project updates. And all of us received an email, um, I have it, but, from our facilities manager.
Yeah, um.
Beautifully done.
So after a lot of these questions, I kinda, I've kinda gotten over the time, like, what's this update, what's that update? I kinda asked Paul to put something together, and he knocked it out of the park. I wasn't expecting this, but this is like incredible. Um, so, I mean, if you didn't know what these projects were, you could look at these and be like, be an expert almost. Um, great pictures.
Yeah.
Great, great everything. Um, yeah, wasn't necessarily on the agenda for this, but it was a good time, and it came in on Friday, so.
This is fantastic. Um, is this something that we can put up on the website?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
An update by our, um, facilities manager, as he's cringing right now, cause he's watching. Um, I just think that this is, this is one of those outreach, you know, that people know that this is, you know, we've said, you know, money on projects, but I think this is fantastic.
Really good.
So, I'd really like to see this up on the, the website.
Yeah, can certainly do that.
Did you have anything to add on this?
No, that was, that was all I was gonna mention.
Okay, uh, also is the revisit and, um, vote on the revised annual town meeting warrant schedule. So after our conversation at the last meeting about dates and timing, uh, Tracy went back to the drawing board to try to fit everything in there, uh, because the, the big question that had come out or discussion point was the recommendation of the Select Board and, uh, the vote to put the items on the warrant. So we wanted to make sure that those dates fell in line with, um, the schedule. So we've opened the meeting, um, warrant, which was February tenth, we voted for that. We voted to close the warrant, uh, for, was it March thirty-first?
Yes.
So we could consider through this vote, um, that it would be Monday, April at four PM. And that was per the bylaw. Um, and then sending them to Town Council. Um, so we vote on the art, articles to send to Town Council. Town Council, um, will have time to review, and then the recommendations to be put on the, um, the warrant once they come back from Town Council. Vote on the final warrant on May fifth, and then the rest falls in line with the legal ad warrant posting review, and then annual town meeting on the ninth. So we have not voted our May meetings yet. So, I think these would fall in line with what we had in April, I believe.
So the warrant is open right now?
Yes.
And it's gonna close on April fourteenth?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Do we have anything on it right now?
Um, I think, Andrew, you have a list going, right?
Yeah, there's only a couple, just like CPA has one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the one with the recall.
Earth removal bylaw.
I have a list in my office.
Yeah.
If I wanna put something on, do I just come in and see you, or do we do it here? Where, how do, how does that work?
Feel free to let me know. Um, I think we are gonna come at some point and discuss them, whether we're gonna put it on.
Okay.
Yeah, but anytime, it works for me.
Yep. Yeah, I can't remember what we had in here for, for the April, but, um, we'll come back at the next meeting, um, just to reconfirm our meetings for, um, for April, and then maybe we can go into possibly what the, the May looks like. But, um, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the, um, updated or revised timeline for the annual town meeting schedule.
So much.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll please.
Don U.I.
Garboni, I.
Kindred, I.
Day.
Okay, alright, you have your orders, Trace. Alright, our next scheduled meeting is March tenth, um, at five forty-five PM. Um, please note to public that we have changed our starting time from five thirty to five forty-five. So some of us will probably still be here at five fifteen, because we'll forget, but five forty-five.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Speaking of dates, I feel like we touched on this in one of the last couple of meetings, but when do you think we might schedule all the budget meetings?
That I was hoping Andrew was going to have.
Um, I can send it out this week, but I was thinking presenting it on thirty, on the thirty-first. You'll have it by March fourteenth, I'm thinking that first week of April.
The first week of April, you wanted to do the bang, 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 bang meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we going to remeet with Free Town and the School Committee before April?
I don't think so, but me and Debra are trying to meet on the recall provision.
Cause we said that timing was gonna be a little difficult for town meeting, but, um, that we were still going to work to get that meeting together for the amendment, or the potential amendment.
Less interested in that, more interested in the budget. As I understand it, it's one point four million this time, four million they're asking for this year.
One point six.
One point six, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't foresee that happening, and I'd like to know why they're asking for that, so that's my concern with that. Um, because I will absolutely speak against that at Town Hall meeting, just so they're aware, if you're watching. So I wanted to have that meeting ahead of time, if possible.
One consideration that, if we do the first week of April, then whoever is, uh, re-elected or newly elected won't be part of that process the next week.
But they're also missing all the budgeting season, other than what they're coming into. Like, I remember when I was on the School Committee, they passed the budget that night, so that I, the people coming in couldn't deal with it, you know? I didn't attend that meeting.
But you're talking about holding those meetings that first week, so.
First to second.
Second.
Because the second week, April seventh, is the, um, the election.
You can come right after the, come on in, nine o'clock, we'll hold it.
Get sworn in and jump in the fire.
Jump in.
So we could potentially, um, look at Wednesday, the ninth, Thursday, the tenth, and maybe the Tuesday, the fifteenth. I know we've made accommodations, the Select Board, um, with the off days, you know, to try to fit those budget meetings in, so that they weren't eight hours.
Yeah.
You know, we were able to break them, break them down into three nights.
Mary, could you give me those dates again?
Um, Wednesday, April ninth, Thursday, April tenth, Tuesday, April fifteenth.
And you do have a regularly scheduled meeting on April fourteenth?
Right.
Fourteenth and the eighteenth that month.
So.
Twenty eighth, I'm sorry.
I guess we can revisit, I don't know if we're gonna need the fourteenth, but it's possible. I mean, we could, I don't know.
Would you be looking to reorg?
I'm thinking that we're going to need, we have to reorg the first meeting after, um, town meet, you know, after town election. So if the first meeting is the ninth, then the first thing we would do is hold, um, just a quick reorg of the board. I wouldn't put any other business on there, we can always hold that off and let the chair, um, decide when they do the subcommittees and the rest of the reorganization, but I would think that for that night at least, we'd put that on there. Okay? Good for you.
Sounds good.
Alright, and then, um, I know the fourteenth was a earmarked, I don't know that we're, we'll see if we need anything, I guess, I'll stay, whoever will stay in touch with Andrew, and see if we need to have that, that extra night.
I think that was the closing of the warrant, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
So we will.
Good thought, it's late. We're holding it on the fourteenth. Alright, so we do have some correspondence in here, um, we did receive, uh, an update from, um, Comcast with their annual filing notice. Um, I would hope that, I don't need to read it at this point, but it's available online. Um, or on the town website under our agenda posting. Um, we do have a letter in here from a resident, um, regarding a formulation of a regional affordable housing collaborative. Potentially, we could add this to a future agenda. I don't know, I'll go over that with you, Andrew, on, on that at this point, but, um, I appreciate, uh, the fact that the residents, you know, are sending these in. So this letter is also on the packet.
Is he a resident?
Hmm?
Is he a resident?
I don't, I'm assuming he wasn't a resident.
He's a former.
Yeah, he's a former TA. I don't know that he's a resident, I think he's just reaching out to all.
If your community would be interested in joining together in the regional way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I took it if it was a resident, I'm like, oh, we have a resident.
No.
Resident Gagnon, okay.
Well, he could be, but I don't know that he is.
Alright. Forget that on our, on our agenda. Um, okay. Alright, that's all I have for open session, so, um, give me a minute. So, um, give me a minute as I read this next novel. Um, so I'm going to entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, um, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the dispatchers union, and pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the police chief, and pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiation, negotiating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and pursuant to chapter, uh, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares Bottleful Farms, Juicy, Northeast Alternatives, Bud's Goods, and Twisted Growers, and not to return to open session.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll please.
Tony, you eye?
Carboni, eye.
Kindred, eye.
Day.
Okay.